Box normally it's a little bit there.
We will, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, we will call this meeting to order. And the first step is roll call.
Councilmember San Antonio.
President.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara.
President.
Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Here.
Mayor Ehlers.
Here.
Record will show that all members of the city council are present tonight.
Okay, item three is pledge of allegiance. If you can rise, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is special presentations, and we have none tonight. And that brings us to item five, which is oral communications. And I believe we have.
We have seven right now. Make it eight.
Seven, eight, and then that's it. Once we start oral communications, which we just did, that closes it off for tonight. So we'll do the full three minutes. Wow.
And just a reminder, I'll call you up three at a time. Oral communications are for anything that is not on the agenda tonight. First speaker is Helen Bourne, followed by Patty Stottlemyre, and then Scott Campbell.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I did not make the meeting on November 5th about the Santa Fe Drive issue. And I just wanted to add my voice to those who are saying, I wish you would just leave it the way it is right now. You know, we all tend to resist change at first, but I think as time goes on, people will get used to it. I'm just not really in favor of widening roads because it, less traffic, to me, means less air pollution. And that would be a good thing. And also to prioritize the safety of pedestrians, bicycles, and all. Anyway, I just wanted to add my voice because I missed the meeting, so that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this is a thank you and a big thank you. First of all, Councilman Schaefer, thank you for initiating this and then getting our city manager, Jennifer Campbell, to work on it. And then Mayor Ehlers for writing this fantastic, strong letter that is so needed. And I'm going to read it now. So this is to the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission. Dear Commission, while we support the Telecommunications Act of 1996, I strongly urge you not to adopt the FCC-proposed rules in Docket 25-276, misleadingly titled "Build America: Eliminating Barriers to Wireless Deployments." This initiative is not about building America. It is about stripping away all local rights, eliminating public participation, and giving the wireless industry absolutely control over the placement of cell towers. And, oh, I put in here, and maybe the next time if you could add the red there, wireless facilities like 5G in Encinitas. If adopted, these rules will block local government from requiring the independent experts to verify the FCC radiation compliance, leaving the industry to self-certify. Force automatic approval of cell towers after 150 days if there is strong community opposition. Eliminate vital community protection by prohibiting consideration of aesthetics, property values, and historic preservation. Silence residents by removing public hearings, conditional and special use permits, and local decision-making. Undermine private property rights by driving down home values without recourse or compensation. These rules will allow towers to be placed literally everywhere in Encinitas with no say from my city council or our residents. This is unacceptable. We desire to maintain our control over their locations, aesthetic impact, historic impact, and removal when no longer in use. I respectfully call on both the FCC and Congress to reject these rules and preserve the authority of local government control to protect safety and character of the city of Encinitas. Sincerely, Mayor Bruce Ehlers. Thank you. And I encourage everyone to file a comment to the FCC. We still have time. Because of the government shutdown, it looks like the 17th was not the deadline. And we can make as many comments as we want. I encourage everybody to do so. Thank you so much, City Council, all of you.
Following Scott, the next three speakers, Richard Solomon, Dave Dean, and then Beth Whitaker.
What happened to the first row over here? Good evening, council. My name is Scott Campbell, live in Estes District 1. And I'm here to talk about politics. Politics is, some may say, is about persuasiveness. And that's a very important part. You know, people come and they ask for things, and people oppose them, people support it, and they're debated, and their decisions are made. It's all about compromise. You can't get everything. You can't have, you can't spend money endlessly, even with other people's money. You can't always have, it's not always available. Sometimes it dries up. Other people say that politics is war by less than lethal means. And we've seen some of that up here. We see some pretty, we've seen some ugly stuff. While I'm exercising my personal politics, I've seen, I checked out the comment section in the city agendas, and I noticed some things. I noticed some phrases that are like four, five, six, seven words long that are used repeatedly, like this week, 113 times. 113 different people use the exact same phrases. And I'm talking about four, five, six different phrases. So when I think about that, I ask the council to consider the strength of that opinion as maybe it's just one opinion, it's not many. It's pretty easy to get people, hey, push this button, and boom, your opinion is gone. Your opinion is out there. That's really, it's not, that's not a full-valued opinion, in my opinion. I guess I'll just talk about that. On the agendas tonight is some other things about basically continuing with the COVID crisis, and I asked the council to stop that stuff. We don't have very much money in the budget, half a million dollars. We don't know what kind of emergencies we're going to have in the next seven months before the next budget cycle. And I really think it'd be risky if we take, draw that down too low for any reason other than a true emergency. In the few, in the last few years, we've had some major storm drains that have failed. We might have some more. We've had sinkholes that have appeared out of nowhere. We might have some more. I can show you some that I think are going to be bad at the north end of town. So those are just things I want you to consider when you're making any decisions in the future. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Richard Solomon.
Good evening. I live at 1127 Cornish. I was here on October 16th. I was here in response to an article in the Union Tribune about La Paloma, about the renovation and the saving, what I believe is a very important building and activities in the city of Encinitas. At the end of the meeting, I was invited to write a letter to the council expressing my interest in that and possibly, I don't know if there was a commission or something of the council. And I never heard back from anybody or anything. So I just want to make sure I wasn't missing the boat as to whether or not the council is still behind the street decor they showed in that article. And I just wanted to make sure I was doing what I needed to do to get involved, if that's possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Dave Dean, Rock Garden. Couple of things bring to the table again, the CRC and homeless. This week, I made two phone calls to the police department. And there were two different occasions. One gentleman, one lady, both had camped out on Second Street, right next door to the CRC. And you could tell they were huddled up with their umbrellas and smoking their cigarettes and trying to have their own little private space. And in each time, the sheriffs came out and helped them out, escorted them in the kindest of way to move on, but they were definitely there, huddled down. And the third instance was up at the sheriff's department. And so I saw a gentleman huddled and camped under some bushes right in the parking lot of the sheriff's department there. And he was doing his cigarettes and smoking. So I took some pictures and went inside and showed them what was happening in their parking lot, and they took care of that as well. And then the fourth instance, I didn't reply to the sheriff's on that because it was too early in the morning. It was about 7 o'clock. And it was lazy acres, and there were three homeless guys sitting on the tables where you can have your lunch and stuff. And they were smoking their marijuana and putting big plumes of smoke as I walked around to avoid it. And they yelled out, it's time to wake and bake, was their terms that they used. I think we have an issue that we need to deal with. And I know we have some new people coming on board to help out, and I'm looking forward to that. But just wanted to know, it's present out there, it's not going away. It is still something we need to deal with. So hopefully that'll happen. And in my last 50 seconds, I'd like to invite everybody in the city, especially on the council. If you have a time on a Saturday or Sunday, I'd love to give you a personal tour of the garden and tell you the stories. I'm usually there from 8 to 12 on Saturdays and Sundays. And I think you'll be amazed if you hear some of the stories on the rocks. They're truly incredible and uplifting. So thanks for your time. That's it.
Hi, I'm Beth Whitaker, and I've lived in Encinitas for 20 years or so. And I'm speaking now to the relationships between two agenda items. And if it's not too late in the evening, I will also speak to those other items, but I can't guarantee my longevity. These meetings go late sometimes. I'm usually watching on YouTube in my bed toward the end of the night. I appreciate our city's partnership with CRC, JFS, and the Rescue Mission. And I oppose all ordinances that criminalize poverty. If it's legal to park somewhere, it's discriminatory to restrict a person from resting or sleeping in that parking spot. It's also not right for us to criminalize sleeping in cars while simultaneously refusing to fund safe parking. As offended as some of you are by state overreach, forcing undesirable and sometimes unsafe housing development, some of us are just as offended by our federal government hoarding our tax dollars while removing infrastructure and safety nets, increasing food and housing insecurity across the country and here. I don't expect city council to overhaul our economic systems, but it's important that we don't confuse criminality with poverty and that this council represent all of us and not just the lucky ones. We aren't a gated city, and people don't need to have been born here or be able to afford expensive housing to deserve to be treated like our neighbors. Thank you.
Final two speakers, Diana Cutlow and then Julie Thunder.
Good evening, Mayor Ehlers, Deputy Mayor Lyons, and members of the council. I'm Diana Cutlow, Senior District Representative for Senator Blakespear. It was a pleasure seeing several of you at the opening of the California Pizza Kitchen the other night. I'm glad to know that our offices can work together to support local businesses, which are so important to our community. Senator Blakespear's next California Book Club will discuss Golden State: The Making of California, a really interesting book on the history of California to get where we are today. It's by Pulitzer Prize-winning journalist Michael Hiltzik. And the Zoom meeting takes place on January 24th at 10:00 a.m. The moderator always does a great job of getting anybody who wants to speak into the conversation, so I hope that she'll join. And people can sign up at sd38.senate.ca.gov. Last week, Senator Blakespear attended Veterans Day ceremonies in her district, both in Orange County and in San Diego County. The senator continues to honor veterans all during Veterans Appreciation Month through a Patriot Spotlight. You're invited to nominate veterans or volunteers who assist veterans in District 38 for Senate recognition. Please go to the webpage and click on Veteran Appreciation Month under the District tab to find the nomination form. We can never thank our veterans enough for their service, and those that help them deserve recognition as well. Lastly, I'd like to wish you a very happy Thanksgiving. Personally, I'm going to be hosting my nephew, who's a Marine stationed at Miramar, for the holiday. And Encinitas residents can host a Camp Pendleton Marine at your home by going to the Armed Services YMCA webpage or searching for Home Hospitality. I'm sorry, one more thing. The senator will be hosting an open house and toy drive for families on December 9th at our new Carlsbad office. You're all invited to join us, interact with the senator and staff, contribute a toy that will be donated to District 38 families. And the holidays can be very difficult for some people, especially those who are alone. I want to remind people of the 988 hotline, the crisis hotline. And veterans can dial 988 and press 1 for special counselors that are prepared to meet their needs. Let's lift each other's up as we go through this holiday season. Thank you.
Hello. Julie Thunder, Cardiff, multi-decade resident. I didn't know, hi Diana, I didn't know that we could use this forum for political campaigning. So I'll be coming up to campaign for my favorite candidates in the future. Be prepared for that. I would like to bring your attention to political action committees in Encinitas. We've always had them. I think we have more than our fair share for the size of our city. Currently, one of them was named Encinitas Action. As a reminder, I'm sure you guys know it, a political action committee raises money for a political cause. Typically in Encinitas, it's to support or oppose a candidate. Encinitas Action has already raised a substantial amount of money for there being no election coming up. They have been using their forum or their platform with, using deceptive purpose, deceptive practices to solicit members to sign up with them and to send emails to you. And the emails are going directly to Encinitas Action, and then they're deciding which ones you guys get. Tonight, you have over 40 emails. I'm sure you're aware of that. There's a form email that is copied over and over and over on a particular item tonight. And I just want you to be aware that Encinitas Action has changed their name to, quote, "Neighbors for a Common Cause PAC," Political Action Committee. So be on the lookout for that. Encinitas Action is the same as Neighbors for a Common Cause. And I think a lot of people in Encinitas think they're just a happy little Encinitas group. What they're doing is they're collecting emails, and they're soliciting people to join their group so that they can use those numbers to campaign against most of you. And I'm just going to say the ugly truth out loud. And I'm glad I get to campaign for my favorite candidates. I'll use your three minutes whenever I can. Thank you.
That concludes oral communication tonight.
Okay. And so that brings us to report from closed session tonight. And we did have a closed session tonight, and we considered one item. And it was the appointment, public employee appointment of the city attorney. And in that action, we have, we would like to report, the city council voted unanimously, 5 to 0, to appoint effective December 1st, 2025, Ajit Thind as interim city attorney and Andrew Jarred as interim assistant city attorney from the firm Colentuno, Highsmith, and Watley, under the same terms and conditions of the existing city attorney agreement. Staff, we'll bring back the, back an agreement for council ratification and approval on the December 10th, 2025 meeting. That's our next meeting. And that's the report from closed session. That brings us to item seven, changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the posted agenda. And moving to the consent calendar, item 8F has been removed by a member of the public.
Okay. And would anybody else like to remove an item on the consent calendar? I see none additional, so I will entertain a motion for everything but 8F.
Motion to approve everything but 8F.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Let's call the question.
Motion carries unanimously. Takes us to item 8F.
Okay. And how many, one person or more?
One person, and they do not need a staff report.
Okay. And so.
Molly Hindleyan, come on down.
Good evening, council, mayor. Molly Hindleyan, District 2. I pulled this item because I just have been seeing some things that might need some improvement, and I had some questions and concerns. I want to ask, did we get everything we asked for? I ask this because I was not as involved with participating with all the citizen review and the Mobility Commission review since 2023. So I have gone through quite a few council meetings to get some history. This is what was proposed, and you know, I focus on this area quite a bit. I speak to it because I see some concerns. So this was the cross bike, Encinitas Boulevard, Belore. That was the proposed plan, and this is what it is. And my issue and concern is, maybe I'll use the little pointer here, is that you can't see the kids on bikes or pedestrians when you're in the second lane, when you're in the right-hand lane. Because the way they start lower, and then cars are blocking your view, and especially as people are using the bike lane to take a ride on Belore, there's some conflict. So when I was reviewing some of the initial discussions to this Belore section, it was either councilmember Henze or Cranz, they talked about some standing beacons or some flashing beacons. I don't know if standing is the right word or flashing or something so that the people can see people in the crosswalk. And it's also an issue when you go in the other direction. You can see how deep that curve is. Oops, sorry. Back, back. Any case, back to, how do I go back? Back. Help me. Any case, so if it wasn't in the scope of the project, perhaps we can add it to the upcoming HSIP because I feel like it's a corner that needs addressing. My second topic was about Saxony. I mention this because I learned that originally there was going to be a roundabout, but the mini roundabout was scrapped due to the Y-expanding entrance off of Saxony Court. And so my biggest issue is, the chicane might be great, but my issue is at night. It needs some reflectors or something. Because I was coming out of the botanical gardens the other night, and you can't see them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from anybody on council? No? And would staff like to respond to the public comments?
One thing about lighting at the chicane, we do have an application in with SCGN-E, and a light will be installed hopefully before the end of the year.
And that is something that we've been working on for quite some time. But I think as, as everyone knows, it does take a bit of time working with SCGN-E to have some installations done. So that was anticipated much sooner.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Okay. Just quickly on this, I appreciate the comments about Belore. Although Belore is not on this item tonight, I concur 100% with the visual challenge of the intersection that were mentioned. I think it's a great, great notification of something we can look at, just kind of take a peek at how we can fix that or what we can do to address that in future items. I don't think tonight is about identifying the project. Tonight is about saying whether the work was completed and whether it was completed within the contract. So we don't have the ability to really look at this project itself. I would like residents to know that I've met with the YMCA, Seabright, and the residential developments in that area at this time to discuss the future of that stretch of road as the new parking lot goes in at the YMCA. Because there will be a need to change that based on the location of the driveway. But that's not what we're voting on tonight. And so there is a motion forward to address that. But at this time tonight, what we are looking at is just whether or not to complete this project. So I think the public should know that we are looking at these concerns that have been mentioned, but this item is actually not about those, just so we're clear on what happens on this. I motion that we approve the work that was done. But again, I want the public to know that that doesn't mean we are not looking at these items because we, in fact, definitely are.
Debby, Mayor Lyons.
Just a follow-up question to staff. The light that we're waiting for SDG and E for, was that part of this contract? Or was it a separate contract? Is that why we're, could you help?
Yeah, so thank you for the question, Madam Deputy Mayor. So that is going to be installed by SCGN-E on one of their power poles. So we do work with SCGN-E when it's a light on their power. So we do work with SDGNE when it's a light on their power pole, they are responsible for it. It's just a long lead item.
So that's why we can move forward with this item tonight as a completion of what the contractor had done under their contract, and that would be separate.
Exactly correct.
Thank you. I'll second the motion.
Okay. And then, so just to put a point on that, within this project and what we're, it's, this is not a notice of completion of the contract, this is a notice of completion of the project, correct?
This would be a notice of completion for the construction contract.
Oh, it is? Okay, so it is just a contract?
Exactly.
And, okay, so that makes all the difference. But the project itself within the city will stay open until all features are completed, including the light.
That's great.
Okay, great. Good. And I support moving forward on this, so thank you. And if I don't have any other speakers, we'll call the question. We have a motion in a second. Okay. I'm not sure, is your mic on? Oh, you're far away from it.
That takes us to item 10A.
Moving on to item 10A. There we go. And this is update to the municipal code, chapter 14 dot 40, Article Three, and introduction ordinance 2025 dash 20 to provide an update, to provide updated code regulations for timed parking zones in the city of Encinitas. And with that, we'll turn it over to staff, to city traffic engineer Abe Bandigan. And let me, one more thing, I forgot, this is a public hearing, so I'll give the procedure for a public hearing. First, we'll give, get the staff report, then we will ask council to disclose any other information they have received that is not included in the staff report. We'll then go to preliminary questions by city council, and then open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then the council will have a discussion and action. With that.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of council, general public, this is Abe Bandigan, city traffic engineer here tonight with the item for our municipal code revision on our time-limited permit parking zones in the city. A little bit of background here, our current municipal code, chapter 1440 dot 90, has some limitations with regards to the capacity it has, allowing the city traffic engineer to implement green curbs and time-limited parking in general. It just allows up to 20 minutes for any reason. When the municipal code was written, the maximum allowed green curb for the city traffic engineer was 20 minutes. Obviously, California vehicle code does allow more than that, but we just have to come to council for every single green curb. We do have a policy that did go to our Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission in February 2021 due to several requests we received from public, mainly our business owners in different areas of the city that requested time-limited parking for different purposes, restaurants, medical facilities, there were, there were different needs. At the point, we didn't have any kind of a policy to follow. We took something that was discussed at the, at the time, Traffic and Public Safety Commission, and they blessed that policy, which we have been utilizing. In August this year, we had a council member initiate an item that was supported by council with regards to implementing time-limited parking on Paseo de las Verdes. However, it was discussed at that meeting that we need to improve our municipal code to be able to implement that time-limited parking. Our current code, as you can see, authorizes implement, I'm not going to go through the whole code, but does authorize implementation of green curb for 20 minutes. Our proposal is to remove this 20-minute restriction from the code and just add to the duration indicated on the time-limited parking or on the curb. We're also recommending adding a new code, 14 dot 40 dot 130, that provides more clarification with regards to how time-limited parking can be implemented and the process associated with that. Obviously, with or without this policy, council at all times has the authority to implement time-limited parking at different areas of the city for different purposes. Paseo de las Verdes, that was discussed after this municipal code revision goes into effect, I would have the authority to put it in. It can be a separate council direction as well, it doesn't matter, but this, with this code, we will be able to implement it. This is the Paseo de las Verdes. I'm not going to go into the details of what this was already discussed in August. This is the area that is a public right-of-way on Paseo de las Verdes, and we can implement green curb with the three-hour park, time-limited parking. And this is the street view at the location, as you can see, there are some cars parked there, but the current use, the majority would, three hours would be enough for, for the residents who use this. That concludes my presentation. Thank you, I'll open to questions.
Okay. And first, we'll go through disclosures, so starting with councilmember San Antonio.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
I spoke with Dick Stern, who is a member of the HOA for NCS Ranch, in regards to Paseo de las Verdes and how far in parking might reach to the development of NCS Ranch.
I have nothing to disclose.
And I think I'd had old discussions back when we met in August with, with Dick and other people in the neighborhood, but nothing germane to tonight's discussion, so I have nothing to disclose. Next, does the council have any preliminary questions of staff? No? With that, I will open the public hearing. And how many speakers do we have?
We have three speakers tonight. First speaker is Fabian Gannell, followed by Dick Stern, and then Elena Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, city council. I have questions, really, because the, the notice about this does not really tell me why this is being done in this way, because the, the Encinitas Ranch parking can be done by you at any time. And what this is instead is a large expansion of the city's power to regulate parking. And the way it's being done is very odd to my mind. So even before the amendment that was, that was added, the addition of 1440 130, of the new powers of the engineer to designate these zones, was not subject to the limitation that's already there in 1440 90, that any such, any such placement of zones be subject to the provisions and limitations of this chapter. Why was that restriction not included in 1440 130? That's not clear. Why is that, why is that no longer appropriate? Also, the original then had the provision that these park, this time-limited parking would not be in non-classified or residential roads or alleys, and that has now been removed. So that's an even further expansion of the city's power unrestrained and, and it seems not, it's not going to be noticed to the public until afterwards to enact time-limited parking. And I don't understand why it's being done this way, and I would like to understand. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Dick Stern. I'm the president of the Encinitas Ranch Community Association, and I'm here tonight on behalf of our homeowners to strongly support implementation of a time-limited parking program for residential streets in Encinitas. As we all know, there are plans for 790 housing units with 1,317 parking spaces near the intersection, A Corrigan Drive and Encinitas Boulevard. Using an assumption of two vehicles per unit, this will leave a deficit of at least 263 parking spaces. Occupants may need to seek parking on neighboring streets such as Paseo de las Verdes, which is the main entry port into Encinitas Ranch, because it is currently a public street. One only needs to look at what has happened to Paseo de las Flores due to overflow parking for Fox Point Farms, which might happen on Paseo de las Verdes unless some action is taken to implement time parking. So now is the time to get in front of this problem. I'm advocating not just for time-limited parking on this one street, but rather for the city to make this change to the municipal code now to be able to address similar issues that arise in the future without creating additional administrative burden. AB 1317, a bill, is a bill that unbundles parking from an apartment rental. If other developments in Encinitas take this approach, renters unwilling to pay for parking may have to find parking spaces elsewhere, and it could further exacerbate the potential for more vehicles to park in residential areas. Allowing construction vehicles and/or residents from those developments to park on Paseo de las Verdes will create parking problems for visitors using the trail system and the park with safety and quality of life issues for homeowners in Encinitas Ranch. Thanks for your support as always.
Hi, Elena Thompson. I was actually, I had checked the box that I'm in support of this item, but my name got called, so woo, Toastmasters. Basically, I wanted to just put forward that the global parking realities today are, that we have a lot of spillover parking all over, and so I really commend the council for staying on top of this, getting on top of this problem now. I know 10 years ago, we had like a parking study in our city, and I don't know really where that went, but the point is that we have parking issues, parking problems, and spillover parkings. And due to state housing law, in fact, we're now under parking a lot of these apartment complexes that are coming online, as, as the last gentleman pointed out. So that the city takes action on this now before the problems further exacerbate, such that we've seen on Villa Molina, such that we're seeing right now with the new Chicken Hawk restaurant on Lucadia Boulevard, what we've seen in our downtown with the COVID change in parking. We really need to be looking at the brush-up between commercial and residential parking and under-parked parking facilities in our city. This is incumbent upon you all to take action now and protect our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes speakers. We did have one speaker who, Molly Hentleyan, who registered support for the recommended action but chose not to speak.
Okay, we will close the public hearing and go to council discussion. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Thank you. I have a comment and then a question for staff. I support, I support this change to our municipal code, and I look at it from the perspective of this helps us to manage available parking, and I think that's a real bonus for us as a city. Instead of creating more asphalted parking places and asphalting more of our beautiful city, let's just look where we've got parking and manage it really smart, be really smart about it. So this is one step in that direction, and I think we have some other opportunities in the future with managing available parking better also. So that's my comment. What I'm, what, I was able to get a little more detailed feedback from staff during our briefing this week on how this was, how each request or petition for a green curb under this revised ordinance would move forward. And I wonder if you could take a moment and explain that how a home, a property owner would petition for it, how that would have to be something adjacent to the property, and then how that goes forward for public comment and notice and to the traffic commission? Could you capture that appropriately for us all?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, yes. So the, the way the process is established right now, which hasn't changed with this municipal code revision, is that we receive a petition request from the business owner or from the resident. They would explain the reasoning behind the request for the green curb, if it's their business operation, if it's their customers using it, if it's a special case with the residential, whatever the situation is, they will explain it. And then we'll survey the location with the parking demand and supply. We look at the parking occupancy, the turnover. If the duration of parking, if the occupancy average of parking space in front of that property is more than double the reasonable amount that's requested by the resident, we will recommend it to the Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission for implementation. Basically, if a business needs a 30-minute parking turnover, if it's a barber shop, or if you say restaurant that needs a one-hour turnover, and we survey and we find out on average, everybody's parking more than two hours there, that's our reasoning for supporting the green curb. That's the way the policy works right now.
And I think that would create a benefit to the businesses, I do. And what else? And when it goes to the Traffic and Mobility Commission, that is where the public can comment. Will there be a notification area radius around the location of where the request is being made so that people who are neighbors and so forth will be notified that this is coming before the commission?
It's not currently in the, in the program, but it's certainly something we can consider if that's the direction of council.
Maybe another way to ask that question, is there any other way the neighbors would be made aware?
There has been cases where the green curb was implemented at a length, not just in front of a business. We just recently, a few months ago, implemented green curb by Patagonia, just north of Chesterfield. And what happened is, we did discuss this with Cardiff 101 and requested they consult with the businesses on that row. It was about, I think, 500, 600 feet. And they came back to us, they said, we confirmed, and everybody's on board, let's. So we have done some version, some level of outreach, but to send out some sort of a notice or mailer out to the potentially affected businesses or residents, we haven't, I mean luckily, we haven't had that many of these, but.
And just to add a clarifying mark, if we do have a resident or property owner request, it really is only a request for their frontage. So if you are a business owner and you are requesting two-hour timed parking, it would only be in front of your own frontage. You, you cannot, as a property owner, ask for timed parking in front of, you know, a different establishment. So that would have to be coordinated with the, the partial owner of the other establishment as well. So that does help ensure that, that we don't have this spilling over into a, a parcel that is not desirable of, of a green curb or, or fitting of a green curb.
Thank you. I'll yield.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Okay. Appreciate those comments. Appreciate everybody coming in to speak tonight. Our three speakers, I think, brought a lot to the table in a small amount of time. Before we go further, and Fabian, I apologize, your name was said, I didn't get your last name quick enough, but can we please, just for clarification, can we answer the question regarding 1440 and 130 versus 1440 and 090? Just for clarification for, for the residents.
So 1440 basically just gives the authority to implement green curb to the city traffic engineer with no clarification language with regards to the process or how it's done and how it's decided. 130 is basically limiting, I guess for lack of a better word, my authority to implement wherever I like by creating a process and a survey and an evaluation criteria to kind of clarify for public, when we implement these, how it was decided to be done.
And chapter?
Yeah, excuse me, excuse me.
Hold on a second, let's get the whole answer here.
The public, the, the public testimony is down. Don't worry, there are more of us, we'll speak up here. We'll get to it.
So, okay, continue, please.
So, so chapter 1440 point 090, that was, that's the original chapter that currently resides in the municipal code, and that includes all curb painting, so that includes yellow commercial loading and unloading, blue paint for physically handicapped. So that really is just, it codifies our ability to paint a curb, and then the new chapter is specific for time-limited parking.
Okay. And so for our 1440 090, you wouldn't want it to go to public review because there's no, you wouldn't want to, honestly, you wouldn't want, you, you wouldn't want the same restraints because you don't want to be kept unable to put a handicap spot, is that what I'm hearing correctly? Something like that.
The 090 has all the different curb colors with their meaning and authorizes the city traffic engineer to implement. The 090 has all the different curb colors with their meaning and authorizes the city traffic engineer to implement. The problem with the 090 is that it only allows up to 20 minutes.
Got it.
So we are fixing 090 by eliminating that up to 20 minutes from it, but we still lack how we are evaluating and how we are implementing green curb. That's why we introduced the 130.
Okay, does that answer?
I think the concern that I've heard, I might be mistaken, the concern is that why are we allowing this to be implemented everywhere? Which is not the purpose of the code, but reading the code just by its verbiage, yes, it is, it is applicable everywhere if we don't trust our traffic engineer.
So we could circle back to cleaning that up maybe. Piggybacking off of conversation that Deputy Mayor Lines started, the idea of a public notice is what I think she's discussing, and, and I'm curious if there's a possibility of taking this code and differentiating between residential and commercial in some way so that I know if someone is getting a green curb, we could let them within, normally it's like 500 feet or something like that for development, similar codes, let them have a public notice, and if you're the one petitioning, it would be on you to send out the public notice. Is there a way to, a mechanism to do that to, so that knowing it feels like they get it sprung on them, I think is what the concern of the public is.
So if there is a concern of, of public noticing not being adequate with our current policy, because we, we don't have letters sent to, to a certain radius of residents, I think that it's, it's absolutely acceptable for us to modify our current implementation policy and just include that as one of the steps that we do notice within a 300-foot radius of the frontage of, of the affected parcel, and that will give them the notification that we are going to have a public hearing at our Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission that gives a platform for the public to come in and speak to the item.
And so could we, working on, working on the fly here a little bit, could we, could we accept tonight's proposal but have it brought back to be amended in December or January? Is that something we can propose as an amendment to accepting this? Either way, whoever, whether it's traffic control, risk management, or city attorney?
So councilmember O'Hara, if I understand you correctly, are you suggesting, and this might be part of the motion, that we, we currently have an A through D subsections of that newly written chapter? We add a, a subsection E that, that really clarifies the notification process, and that be brought for, for codification when we, we come back for a second reading? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I'm asking if we can do that here and if that is something that, that fits within what we're actually talking about in these two items in question, 1440, 130, and 090.
So I, I don't think it has to be written in the municipal code. That can be a step in the policy that, the implementation policy that we currently have. So that implementation policy was brought to our Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission, approved by them, and I'm okay doing it either way. One option is for it to be a clause in the municipal code, so be that subsection E, or probably an easier way is for us to just ensure that we go back to the Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission with a updated implementation, and that has a, a newly added step in our process of notification. But I, either of those two, I think, will support the need that's being requested and get what the residents may, may desire.
Okay, I mean, what I hear is the residents don't want to have anything sprung on them without notice or input. And Deputy Mayor, I believe you're kind of leaning in that direction with your comment?
Yes, clarifying what the expectation will be from the public for notification when one of these is within, I think you recommended 300 feet, foot radius.
Right.
That's all. And I would go so far as to say, I don't think it changes fundamentally what this is. It may not, I defer to the city manager, but it may not, we're not done talking yet, but it may not change it significantly enough to have to go back to the commission, but it's up to others who are smarter than me.
Okay, perfect, I'm glad we're on the same page. The, the item on Paseo de las Verdes, I believe we discussed it, but I didn't, and I could have missed it, there's a couple of pages that, that come across the same. We looked at moving that no parking up to, I believe it was Cypress. If Dick Turner's here, he can confirm that. From Coagarns up to Cypress. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was in the motion itself. Great. I think, I think you did a great job, and I think we've got a couple of small things to address. I think the public from it out and talking about it. I'm going to yield the floor for the moment.
Okay, and I'm up next. Couple of things I wanted to go through. First of all, this code change was not reviewed by the MTSC, so it was just the policy of what the code change, what generated the code change. So in the future, I'd like to see it go through, the actual code change go through MTSC, so they can get the nuts and bolts down. They know better than we do, and I wanted to, want to see that happen in the future. And maybe if one action we could take tonight is to send it back to MTSC with the recommendations for adding a, a public review, and then have the code come back after the code, the modified code is reviewed by the MTSC, have it come back to us.
Mr. Mayor, if I will, I'd like to add that MTSC does not meet again until February, so we can definitely do that. I just want the council to know that there is a, a potential time impact until we'd be able to come back to council for a second reading.
Understood. Could schedule a special meeting, they, you know, they, they get paid whatever, do they get $50 a meeting? I'm not even sure. No, they don't, okay, well, so, yeah, so an extra meeting, you know?
To your point, can we bifurcate that and vote on Paseo de las Verdes to pass that through tonight still?
I think that's fair enough, but let me, let me continue, because I'm trying to clarify, because we got a, an updated, and I think it got posted, the updated attachment one, I just want to make sure that's the code we're talking about right now. So I talked about the policy. One method we could use for the notification is our standard CPP process, our Citizen Participation Plan. It'd be a great way to do this. I'm going to go back now and ask, under the current code, do we have to do any notice? I'm sorry, let me start with the first question. First question, do, do, can you or can we, the council, or can you, this traffic engineer, paint a curb green today and, and put up signs to our four-hour parking?
Yes, up to 20 minutes.
Yeah, and, and there, there's no limitation on that power today. There's actually added limitation here, and I think I was trying to get to the first speaker's comment about, hey, we're, we're opening it up. No, actually, we're contracting what you have today, and, and this, this council up here can, has pretty wide range of saying, we want that green because, and we come up with whatever reasons and we could, we could make that happen. Obviously, we all have an interest in public notice, so moving forward, I think that is a very good idea. So the, let me just check. Oh, one of the reasons I support this, and it was stated by the public, there's a study that I quote often, and it was done up in Southern California area government, up in the Orange County LA area. The average cars per household have gone from 1.7 cars per household in 2000 to 2.4 cars per household in 2015. Very similar demographic to what we see in, in San Diego County, and really very similar. Cars have gotten cheaper, really, honestly, in real terms. They've got, they're, they're, last longer, and then more people are buying cars. And it's a great study if you ever, if you ever get a chance to read it. So we are going to have this problems, not only, this problem, not only because more people per household or more households are having more cars, but because of the housing law trend, as we've stated, where the density bonus law or the Housing Accountability Act has really decimated our ability to require parking to the point where even near a transit center, we cannot require off-street parking. Let me say that again. Within a half mile of the train station, we cannot require a project to have off-street parking. That's bad, but that's our state law, so this kind of problem is going to get bigger and worse, so we need these laws and we, we want to craft them well. So I, I support this absolutely. I would like to, to see it cleaned up. I would like to see it reviewed by the traffic commission, because that, that's really their job. I'd like to see them review the code. I'm okay with bifurcating, I think that's a good way to do it, actually. So with that, I will yield to, well, is there anybody else that wants to speak, or? So I'll make a motion to approve the, unless somebody else wants to take a shot at the motion. I'm, I'll make a motion to approve the, the green, the, what is it? Do we say three or four hour? I'm trying to remember.
I said four.
Three hour.
Three.
Three, three, good, three, three and a half. No, I'm, yeah. Going once, yeah, so three hour as, as in the staff report. On, on this section of road, the whole section of road is shown on the map up there right now, and that we would update the, the proposed code to come back and go through the MTSC in February and come back to us. Would we have to have, we'd, we'd do another public meeting at that point, too?
Correct, it would be another first meeting, first meeting.
Okay, so it'd be a first meeting, and, and that, that's my motion.
Yeah, just want to make sure we got it up to Cypress, that was the.
Yeah, yeah, as shown, up to Cypress.
But is, is that Cypress there?
That is Cypress. It's a little difficult, because on Google Maps, it says Paseo de las Verdes to the, to the north, but it's actually Cypress.
Copy.
Your motion would include the, the discussion of having a, with MTSC, having a discussion about public notice?
Public notice, preferably at, at their discretion, what they think, but I think the CPP would be an ideal methodology. We already use it, it's standard.
Second.
I got a second on that. Any further discussion? Any questions from staff? No? Can you read it back?
Yes, so just a quick point of clarification, it's approving the green three hour on, as depicted in the picture here, and then remanding the item back to MTSC.
With, with direction to add and investigate.
A subsection E, and then the community participation process for that.
The public notice.
Public notice.
Yeah, potentially through the CPP.
Mayor, the, the, what we're showing here was based on the assumption that the municipal change does go through, which gives me the authority to implement. Since this is not going through tonight, I am asking, if possible, just provide clear direction to staff to implement three-hour parking on Paseo de las Verdes.
That is precisely what we're doing tonight. I, I established first that you could do this before tonight, especially we could direct you to do it, and so part of this motion, the first half, is to direct you to do the three hour on this section as, as shown on the screen.
Correct, I thought Pete said approve staff, because.
No, 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 just the parking and then remand it back to MTSC.
Correct, because there's no staff recommendation for the three hour, it's council direction.
Yeah. Okay, so motion second, call a question?
That motion carries unanimously and takes us to item 10B.
There we go, thank you. 10B is a public hearing to consider the introduction ordinance 2025-15 for city council-initiated amendments to the Encinitas Municipal Code, Chapter 9.01, General Offenses. And with that, let's see, this is another public hearing, so same, same drill as last time. We'll do a staff report, and then we'll ask the council to disclose any other information they have received that is not included in the staff report. We'll then have preliminary questions, open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then do council discussion. And with that, if we could have a staff report.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and city council members. I'm Charlotte Brenner, here tonight to present item 10B for amendments to Encinitas Municipal Code, Chapter 9.01, General Offenses. I'd like to provide some background on the items I will be presenting tonight. On August 13th and August 20th, 2025, the city council initiated items to direct staff to review and update the following items. City council initiated item one, directed staff to review Encinitas Municipal Code, Section 9.01.010, camping on private property, and to update the section to remove the clause at night. The intent of this amendment is to resolve ambiguity in the current language of the code, establishing that camping, lodging, tearing, or remaining on private property without the owner's express permission is prohibited at all times and not solely during the night. Item two, directed staff to change the title of Section 9.01.025 from sleeping in vehicles to regulating sleeping in vehicles on a public street or public property, and change the times listed from 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM. The intent of this amendment is to enable a more practical, timely, and compassionate enforcement by supporting both public safety and the well-being of vulnerable community, community members, while also making it easier for concerned residents and businesses to participate in upholding local ordinances. The third item directed staff to add a new municipal code section titled Use a Vehicle as Living Quarters, Vehicle-Based Violation, that would prohibit the use of vehicles as living quarters during certain hours, and to establish vehicle-based enforcement procedures. The intent of this new section would be to ensure public health and safety while minimizing punitive actions against individuals who may be experiencing homelessness. The ordinance is intended to be enforced as a parking violation as opposed to a criminal offense against an individual. Staff have made edits as directed by council to Chapter 9.01 of the Encinitas Municipal Code. Strikeout is used to denote text being removed, and underline is used to denote text being added. Staff have removed the clause at night from Section 9.01.010, camping on private property. Additionally, staff have made recommended edits to Subsection 9.01.020B, camping on public property, which is shown on the screen. These edits further define evidence of camping and include the definition of camping paraphernalia. This update would make the definition applicable to both public and private property. Staff have changed the title of Section 9.01.025 from sleeping in vehicles to regulating sleeping in vehicles on a public street or public property, and have updated the hours for sleeping or lying in parked vehicles to increase the hours of enforcement from 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM, which further reduces the number of hours someone could sleep or lay in their vehicle. We anticipate the sheriff's department and code enforcement can enforce these regulations as amended. Staff is undertaking additional analysis on council-initiated item three to add a new code section titled Use a Vehicle as Living Quarters, Vehicle-Based Violation, as the intent of this amendment is to enforce the violation as a non-criminal parking citation enforceable against the vehicle only. Staff will bring back this amendment to council with recommendations for considerations at a later date. The next steps involved in this process is for the ordinance for the two initiated items to be adopted at the second reading that is tentatively scheduled for December 10th, Staff recommends that the city council introduce ordinance number 2025-15 to amend Chapter 9.01, General Offenses of the Encinitas Municipal Code relating to camping and sleeping in vehicles. This concludes my presentation. Staff, the city attorney, the sheriff's department, and code enforcement are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, now I will ask council to disclose any additional information they have received that is not included in the staff report.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
And I, too, have nothing to disclose. And does anybody have preliminary questions? I see none. So with that, we will open the public hearing. And how many speakers do we have?
We have four speakers.
Okay.
First speaker, Beth Whitaker, followed by Suzanne Stone, Elena Thompson, and then Jim Steiven.
Hello again, and I'm happy that it's early in the evening, so I get to speak again. So private equity firms, unethical developers, and landlords have drastically driven up the cost of American housing. At the same time, our largest American employers get tax breaks and are allowed to pay pay. breaks and are allowed to pay poverty wages while lining their own pockets. Our White House is lined with ugly gold ornaments while our president and his billionaire friends get even richer. I say this all to say that the moral deficits in society do not lie among the poor. Criminalizing sleeping in a car in today's economy is analogous to stabbing people and making it illegal for them to bleed on the sidewalk. Please focus on regulating parking and stop trying to legislate away a problem created by unregulated greed. I understand that you're not looking to arrest people for sleeping, and this is a parking ordinance. This still impacts a person's ability to keep their car and to be free in a free society doing the very best they can. And it's just, I don't think it's our place to start enforcing this in today's economy. Thank you.
Good evening. Suzanne Stone. I am here tonight to talk a little bit about scope creep, which is what I think has happened here. I was here when we talked about adding the hours at night and all of that. That's great. But as you deliberate, I have a question for staff, which is where did the language around camp paraphernalia come from? What is the problem that we're trying to solve with that language? It seems to me that the existing language in the municipal code is enough to evidence that somebody is sleeping. Dave mentioned earlier, some people smoking in a place, some people sleeping on the ground or laying on the ground smoking. There's an ordinance against smoking in public in Encinitas. So I really want to understand the problem that we're trying to solve, and if this is really the solution. Because I'll tell you what, I spared you the drama of rolling in my beach cart today. I have a wheeled apparatus in which I put my umbrella, and extra clothes, and personal hygiene items, and all of that when I go to the beach. And I would be in violation of this, because I'd be in a public place at any time of day with those items. Unhoused people have no choice but to roll their items with them wherever they go. If this, if this change is intended to keep people who are unhoused from resting in our public spaces, that's just cruel. People have to have somewhere to go and have to have somewhere to be. This ordinance cannot be enforced without discrimination. It cannot be enforced for everybody. It would have to be enforced selectively if it's intended to target people who are homeless. And that's just not right. I was walking my dog through the park on Saturday, Moonlight Beach Park, and I saw a dad in the park. It was kind of intermittent showers, I'll call it that day. And he had erected a tent for his kids so that they could duck in there and avoid the showers. There was a little kid sleeping on a blanket. They had a stroller. All of that would have been ticketed under this ordinance. So I, I'm not sure if I understood. It sounds like the final ordinance doesn't come back until the 10th. But I would like you to direct staff to go back and try again. Again, my questions are, what is the problem we're trying to solve? How did this language come to be here? Because it wasn't discussed with the initial council member initiated item. And please do better than this. Thank you.
Hi, Elena Thompson. Thank you for the opportunity to weigh in. And I'm in support of this municipal code enhancement. I spoke about this several years ago, and I still believe that it is incumbent upon all of you, our current public officials, to protect public safety and to protect our businesses, our residents, and our downtown. So as you're addressing the prementioned parking issues in the city, this is really important, too, because what we want to do is protect our town from looking like Mission Bay. Have any of you been to Mission Bay lately? There are cars and RVs and people camping and living all over Mission Bay. And I used to walk there weekly and no longer feel safe, and I've been harassed and victimized. We do not want that in our town. So I commend you for bringing this forward. The ordinance is long overdue to protect our town and largely to protect the people that might be living in their cars and sleeping in their vehicles in our town past 8:00. This is from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So that's really good. And this protects the residents, again, and the businesses from transient, recent prison-released people, sex offenders, and other people living on our streets and amongst us. We now have the homeless outreach that you all just approved last week, which is fantastic, the San Diego Rescue Mission. So you are putting in place and have put in place preventative and compassionate measures to do the right thing, and this goes along with that. So onward ho. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Jim Steiven, resident of Encinitas. I'll be brief. With respect to the sleeping in cars port, part portion of this ordinance, if the concern is to prevent people from sleeping in their cars on the street, I suggest that you fund the safe parking program. Secondly, secondly, I don't see any rational reason why the timeframe involved in sleeping overnight has to be moved from 10:00 to 8:00. I don't understand why make it 8:00 versus 10:00 has any effect on preventing people from sleeping in their cars. With respect to the camping ordinance, as Ms. Stone indicated, there are issues where the indicia of camping would apply to a family on a simple beach outing during the day. So I think this needs to go back to staff to work on the language. Thank you.
That concludes speakers. We did have one speaker, Molly Hentley, who registered support but chose not to speak.
Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing and move on to council discussion. I've got council member Schaefer.
Thank you, mayor. I want to thank you, staff, for going back to the drawing board and figuring this out. And actually, I think that we have a misconception here of what we're talking about camping. A family going down to the beach, they can stay there all day, and the camping is the intent to sleep and to stay long-term, a longer term than, than going to the beach. So if you're saying the person that's, that's there with their family and they're at the park and it's raining out, so all the conditions that come with that, a baby sleeping, they're intending to leave at the end of this. If they're staying there through the evening, then the appropriate officers would come in and address this and say that you can't do that. We probably find them resources, or the attempt to find them resources, like was just mentioned, with the resources that we just talked about last week and passed. So that is the, the reasoning for it. And that's my reasoning for it. So I'm going to motion to approve.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
I think, I think that this proposed language is very unpopular. And I, I think what the intent, and I think one of our speakers captured it pretty well, the intent of this was to resolve ambiguity. Unfortunately, I think with this proposed language, what it does is create more ambiguity. As soon as I read this language, I think, I know so many residents of Encinitas who might be, might, might be identified as doing these activities and have to experience this enforcement action. I, I don't know how you parse out when you have language like this. The difference between, you know, you're kind of like profiling people. You're, you then get yourself, we would then, our enforcement would get itself in the situation where you've got a dozen people doing the same activity. I'm going to pick that one over there, because I've just profiled them as someone who, I don't like the way they're doing that activity. But these people over here, maybe they look like they have a little more wealth or something. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna enforce with them. And geez, that gets sticky. I don't, I don't want, I don't want us to be like that, guys. I just don't want us to be like that. My neighbors, my friends, they had, they bring a van down to the 101. They open the doors. They listen to their music. They sit in their van. They might doze off. You know, this is not who we are. So if we have a problem, I, and I'm not sure I agree that we have a problem that our current ordinance doesn't already solve. But if we have some problem we're trying to solve here, it's not going to solve it by creating more ambiguity and by targeting the lifestyle activities that many of us really appreciate here in our community. So this isn't where I need it to be at all. And I think it creates an impression of a culture where we now are going to restrict your lifestyle. We're going to restrict your quality of life. I don't want to, I don't want to support something like this.
Okay. I'll hop in next. If I can put the sheriff lieutenant on the spot, because I think that's part of why, we've had testimony before about this, and it came back, this was feedback we got from the sheriff, and how do we better enforce our laws? And I don't recall the exact words, and I hope Lieutenant Davis can. Tell us, tell us if you can about what problems you have enforcing the current code, especially when it comes to defining camping, and, and where you think you need help?
Well, mayor, members of the council, thank you. Lieutenant Davis filling in for Captain Watts tonight. And realistically, with the assistance of the, the social workers who are going to help us with the rescue mission, we appreciate that. And really, it's, it's about outreach. It's about resources and giving us a reason to be able to contact someone. And if they're in need of resources and discerning, is this an individual in a hard place in need of resources, and not just a person visiting the beach for a few hours? I think the deputies can discern that. And, and you can just engage in a simple conversation. I mean, it's, it's not that hard, I think, to discern that. But so I hope I answered your clear question.
Maybe, maybe a more pointed question, and I'm going to put you a little on the spot. How do you, how do you avoid profiling somebody? And they're homeless, they're not. You know, to the degree we can be objective, we should make our code as objective as possible, but still give you the tool you need, but not put you in a place where you potentially violate anybody's civil right?
Well, to some degree, I'm going to defer to the city attorney. But it's totality of the circumstances. It may not be one singular thing. It may be a cumulative thing, the erecting of a shelter, a tarp, a tent, not just one singular thing. I think maybe in the drafting of this, maybe that's why there's an exhaustive list, the totality of the circumstances, and, and what you see, observe, what you have conversation in, as opposed to just one singular thing. And I don't know if the city attorney would like to weigh in or not, but.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Lieutenant Davis. So one of the issues with our existing code is that it does not have a definition of camping paraphernalia that applies to private property. So the current code reads camping is evidenced by, among other things, the establishment of sleeping accommodations, use of a bedroll or sleeping bag, erection or maintenance of a shelter. But that only applies to camping on public property. There's no definition of camping on, camping on private property or definitional phrases that could help you, help gather evidence to support camping. So the first, the first order of business for this amendment to subsection B is to make it apply to both camping on private property and camping on public property. The second reason for the amendment, and it's similar to some other cities, is that it gives a not exhaustive list, but it does give a list of items that can be used in the enforcement to determine whether camping exists, because the existing regulations have very little, very little examples of what camping paraphernalia is. So this is a slightly more detailed list that can be used, you know, in court to support as, you know, to support evidence that someone was in fact camping. Obviously, any camping ordinance, anti-camping ordinance, requires discretion on the part of law enforcement officers. Law enforcement officers need to take into the totality of the circumstances when determining someone, whether or not someone is camping. This just provides definitional sections that can be used to support camping when a case is filed in court.
Okay. So to go down that, that path, how do we, how do we, with the definition in front of us, how do we avoid profiling somebody? Is there enough there? And I'll put the question out to the city attorney and to the sheriff. How do we make sure we, we guarantee, or we ensure to some degree that we are not profiling people because they look like they're less wealthy than somebody who has the, you know, Yeti setup here, the Yeti cooler, the Yeti tent versus maybe something more makeshift than, you know. I want to be, I want to put us in firm legal ground and, and make sure that we're, we're not going down a path where we are setting up a potential for profiling.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Elers. I certainly understand your question. I'm sure the sheriff's office will respond. But the existing definition of camping and what can be used as evidence of camping is just similarly, you know, subject to profiling. You know, whether you have an expensive blanket or you have a cheap blanket. I mean, in theory, any ordinance is subject to profiling. This just gives a more detailed list. But ultimately, it's the council's discretion how they want to describe camping.
Okay. I don't know if Lieutenant, anything to add? I just want, don't want to cut you off.
Much what the city attorney just said. It applies to everyone, regardless of whether it's a fancy cooler or fancy tent or whatever the case is. And you just have to, you know, totality of the circumstances, use some discretion. And as it seems spelled out here, it applies to everyone and not just, you know.
So, and I'm not, I don't know that I formed what I would change. But I can tell you, my, my experience with planning, we, we always had the problem of defining what a unit is. It's not really a problem. A unit always includes a kitchen. That, that's how you tell whether or not there's an illegal unit on a property. It's whether it has a kitchen. You know, in an ADU, a qualify for a kitchen. You, you can have that plus your main house, but you can't have two main kitchens. And so to me, camping may involve the cooking paraphernalia, cooking in particular. I, I look at the old definition and it's or, it says, sleeping accommodations, the use of bedroll or sleeping bag, the erection or maintenance of a shelter. I, I don't know whether that means, takes all three to trigger or any one. And perhaps if we had some statement that said, if you trigger all three of these, to me, camping or, or somebody permanently habitating in our parks or on private property without permission, they have all their possessions with them. And, and that's, that's the indicator. Now, why do we want this ability? Because the vast majority of those people that are out in the public parks do not want help. We offer them help. That's what the HOPE program is. That's what the Buena Creek Navigation Center. And right now, we have no way of getting them to go to the, to any of those places to get help, to get their, their lives back together. So the, so we're walking a line. We are walking a line. We're trying to help them get help so they, they don't die from drug overdoses or whatever problems they have out on the street. In the case of certainly women out on the street, they, they run the potential of being victims of crime. And we don't want them to have to stay there. They're, and then, so the fundamental question in front of us is, if people are offered an alternative, do they have any obligation to follow the local laws if they turn down that? And I believe they do have an obligation to, to follow our laws, our no camping on public property laws, our no defecating in public, our no drunken disorderly in public laws, if they turn down an invitation to come get a bed with three square meals a day and other services. And that's the fundamental problem. But today, if you go out on ride-alongs, which I have done, and, and with the sheriff, and you go up, they are very, very empathetic, trying to get the people into it. Because quite frankly, I think they'd rather get them to the Buena Creek Navigation Center than have to come back later and write a report because they were a victim. And, and so we're trying to get them there, but we have no way of getting them to go. And, and it's been a problem. And then we have no way of compelling them at all. This just puts some pressure on it, on them, so that they, they do avail themselves and fulfill that obligation to follow our laws. So I, I'm, I don't know that this is the perfect wording yet. I'm not quite there. But I see camping as including some sort of meal preparation, some sort of, all their possessions down there at the beach. I mean, I know we take a lot to the beach, but I usually don't bring, you know, a bedroll and things like that. I may, may bring a tent, but rarely even. So with that, I'm going to yield, but that's my thought process right now. I'm, I support this, but I, I think the wording still needs some crafting. Councilmember O'Hara.
Sure. Thank you. So I, I don't believe that our. So I, I don't believe that our, I don't believe that our sheriff's profile, I've seen them too much around town. I just want to make that statement clear. So these are not new laws. These are laws that exist that we are intending to do exactly what the mayor just said, provide a circumstance where we are able to first offer these, this population of people who need help, help first and then to address the rest of the population who wants to manage their quality of life that they enjoy. So I think, I do think, I think, I think 9001.010, I'm perfectly good with, I think it's a, the right edit. 901.020, camping on public property, I agree with the mayor that we could make some adjustments. But I think before I do that, I'd like to ask the sheriff if you don't mind. Tell us what happens when you see somebody walking to the beach with a cart behind them and a chair and a umbrella and what may or may not be a backpack that you can't tell how old it is.
If we're close enough to correspond with them, we may wish them a good day and say hi and acknowledge them in passing and maybe a brief conversation.
And when you are called to a, to a call or acting as the cops patrol and you come across a resident or a person camping or you're not sure of the situation and you feel it's time to check in, how do you make that decision and what is the first thing that you do? Is it still services first?
It's always a, a resources first approach. And like I said, it's totality of the circumstances. A lot can be found by just having a brief conversation. This is where, once we have social workers who are able to assist us, can go even a step farther than deputies can. But is this individual someone who is intending to stay, as someone mentioned earlier, longer term at this location, potentially even overnight? They're set up to sleep overnight. They're erecting a shelter or have erected a shelter. And, you know, that will be still a resources first approach with the other end of the spectrum being enforcement of the municipal code.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I'm in support of this. I do think on the second, the, the second wording, it might be good to change something. I think obviously use of camping paraphernalia becomes pretty obvious what that is, maybe Presence might be changed to proof of previous use or something along those lines. And again, we'd have to resort to the legal and the sheriff to run on this, but, and then maybe changing it to the end with the intention, something that adds the intention of, or in the act of camping and establishing a dwelling unit or shelter. Some verbiage that establishes that difference between somebody walking to the beach versus somebody attempting or intending to create a dwelling unit or a shelter of some sort. I do believe that what we're really doing here is amending a, an ordinance that allows the sheriffs to get people to services in a, in a more efficient fashion rather than having people turn it down. And then at the same time, also making it clear that, you know, homeless is not a crime. We want to get you connected to services. Within that, we do have rules in the city that we ask you to cooperate on, like everybody does. I think that's an accurate assessment of it. So I'm going to rest right now. I'll, I will support these with probably an amendment to the second one.
Okay. And Deputy Mayor Lines. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the, the term fair, firm but fair is kind of what we're looking at here. And this is just tightening it up. This is already happening. The enforcement is already happening. This isn't, it's not that it's not happening. This actually gives more value to the, the sheriff and all the deputies to have a more detailed list of what to look for, how they can identify those specific, and again, it's to initiate a conversation. We have, I think we're going above and beyond and we've continued to, just as short, just as low as last week, talking about enhancing. We've funded two more employees specifically for this. We have two more sheriffs on top of this. We've put real resources on the fact that we're trying to be firm but fair. If you want to come here, if you want to get off the street and you want to find a house, we're going to help you. If you're trying to come to this, this town to just mill around and not do that, that's not really, that's not really what we're looking for. We, we have a great community. We have a mini, a beautiful beach, a beautiful park, all those things. However, we're not, we're not going to sit here and allow that person that wants to call one, call two, call three, call four, resist. And that's a lot of resources. That's a lot of resources to people that other parts of town that don't get that advantage and don't have that advantage once our resources are exhausted going after this person that's been, that's been approached on a number of occasions. So I think this is actually good. I think if you look at line five of the new, of B of the underline, it says camping facilities or cooking, sorry, cooking facility. That is, that, that's right there inside your looking for cooking or a kitchen or some of that nature. So it's, it's, I think it's pretty exhaustive. Again, right now, they're working off of the two lines. It's a lot more broad, but like Lieutenant Davis said, they are looking at the totality of this, this entirety. They're not looking at the one thing, they're not saying, oh, you got cooking equipment, you're, we're taking you or we're going to give you a ticket or anything of that nature. They're looking at it and if, let's say you were walking to the beach and you looked to be that you might need resources, maybe they might out for you resources. They're going to start there. That is where we start. However, if this is the third time we've come out and you're watching, you walk to the beach and you're not doing that, we would write, probably write a, a ticket because you're not, you know, if you're, you're causing issues or causing problems, then there'd be a time to do that. So I, I appreciate you responding to that, Lieutenant Davis and Tarek Wynn, with the idea that we have this in place already. The enforcement is already happening. This actually gives more guidance, more guidelines and a little bit more restrictive to some level to, to their ability to enforce this. So I think we're doing a better job in actually addressing this at all versus leaving ambiguous, leaving ourselves open to either a legal fallout, but it's also making sure that that person, those people, whoever they are, are able to get those resources. And we are, we have been very upfront about that for the last year, every team, every single time we come across this topic. So I'll rest there.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lines.
Yeah, Lieutenant Davis, I'll ask you a couple of questions here. First, we already can enforce in our public roadways, public land, public parks when someone is sleeping at night, correct?
Correct.
And we're already offering services. This is, I agree with my colleagues who say, yep, when we go and we find someone who looks like they need services, we engage and we offer services. And we're already able to connect them with services and the Buena Creek Navigation Center. We're already able to do that, these things, correct?
Well, deputies do not administer people into the Buena Creek Navigation Center. So that's where the social worker would be extremely helpful in navigating resources that are beyond law enforcement's traditional means of assisting someone.
Thank you for clarifying, right, with our partners who are helping us with navigating people to that housing, to that service. There's a lot here that we already do. I think, I think it's, I think what this does is create a lot more confusion where it opens us up to potential criticism and maybe risk as far as legal action that we are discriminating when we have citizens who do some of these activities anyway. So I, I think we already achieved these things. I don't know why we need this additional help when the city attorney says, well, we just need to clarify what camping is on private property. That doesn't make sense at all to me either. No offense, but you know, if someone's on your private property, you can have them removed. So I don't know why we have to define camping on private property. Well, maybe I can ask that as a question. Is that true? If someone, if, so if someone's, I'll ask the lieutenant.
Okay, we answered it last time we talked about this subject, though.
I'm asking the lieutenant.
Yeah.
You know the answer.
Jim, please.
Deputy Mayor, if you could ask the question just one more time?
If someone's on your property and you want them to leave, we need to refine our definition of camping in order to have the language we need to get them to be removed? That's my question.
Well, there is a trespassing statute in the penal code for private property. So as well, yes, we, there's multiple ways.
So we do have ways.
We could be called, requested, if you're on private property, someone can be requested to remove from private property for the 602 section of the penal code.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I'm still not in support of this.
Councilmember San Antonio.
I think just last week, we talked about the fire codes and I, I thought they were great. And my colleagues up here were like, no, they're not perfect. There's stuff in here that could be tightened up to put up the guardrails, to put up some safety nets here that could firm this up even more to protect the city. And I didn't think about it. And here we are, we put in a little bit more verbiage. I understand it's maybe controversial, but these are the things that, to be objective, to, to help delineate what we need or what, what can be looked for. And, and to me, I'm pro-law enforcement, so I, I put faith in the sheriffs. I put, I, in all the interactions of whether I've gotten a ticket, thank God it hasn't been for a long time. I, I listen and I follow the direction and I'm, they talk to me and I'm on my way. I haven't had, I don't want to tell them how to do their job either, how to, whether they're profiling or, you know, that's, that's, maybe that's not the right term, but I trust that they do their job to the best of their ability as professionals. They are not here to, I know they're not here to get rich. I know they're not, they're here to help. Law enforcement, first responders, what we do up here, we're here to help. So I think with that in mind, I don't think that this verbiage here allows, necessarily allows them to go, oh, I'm going to profile this person. I believe what they're doing is, one, their job, two, I think they can discern whether or not something is happening or, you know, maybe with, that it's not, that they're, they might be camping or not. For me, when I think about it, that's, these guys are here to do a, a job. I've met so many of these, these, these fine sheriffs around town, spoken with them and I've seen them in action. I honestly, I'll be honest, it happened this morning at, at the coffee shop next door to my shop. I made, I made a call. The sheriffs came within five minutes. They talked to an unhoused person. It became kind of a little wild and they had to put him in, in the, in the car, in their, in their patrol car. So I've seen it. I've seen the professionalism that these guys have, that these sheriffs have. I think, I guess as I'm listening to this, I, I just feel like it's like, oh, these guys are doing things willy-nilly, but they're not. These guys are professionals and I really truly believe they are resources first. That's the way I feel. I'm in support of this. I guess we could use a couple of amendments if you guys are going to put those forward, but I'll yield.
Okay. And the city manager handed me a snapshot of the Carlsbad code and I think it hit on a couple of points I was trying to put into words, but I couldn't. One, one thing I was looking for, it talks about what a camp is. Camp means using camping implements in an outdoor area or to erect and occupy a camp facility for living accommodation purposes such as sleeping activities, preparations to sleep, storing personal property, that's the one I think we should add in there, or making a campfire. I would change that to cooking accommodations or something like that. And it goes on from there. I won't read everything through. And then it also goes camping does not include picnicking, sitting, lying or sleeping in an outdoor area or in a camp facility that is not being used for living accommodations purposes. And I like the idea of adding camping is not, because I think that's how we, and we can get more specific in there to address beach activities, other, other activities. Yeah. If you could remain quiet, please. Let's see. So, so that would be the changes. I would, I would maybe send this back and, and recommend we review neighboring cities, especially Carlsbad. I think they've got some very good definitions in here that would augment ours and get more to the point while ultimately what we're trying to do is support our, our sheriff's ability. I'm going to tell a quick story about a ride-along I went on with, I was riding with a sheriff and it was at night, it was a Saturday night and we went, there was a call, a property owner down right next to Moonlight Beach that had privately owned sand immediately adjacent to Moonlight, had called in, a homeless person sleeping on their, they're camping on their property. And the lieutenant happened to be out doing, doing, patrolling that night and he got there first and he didn't see me coming up behind him. And I came up right behind the sergeant. So lieutenant was already there engaged with the person. And when I came up, I could hear what he was saying and it was so empathetic and it was, we can get you services tonight, we'd like to get you off the street, we can take you there tonight. It was, it was, you could tell, it was practiced. There was, he was not searching for words. They were rolling off and she was like, no, no. And this was a woman probably about 40 years old, not as hardened as some you would see out there. And she says, no, I'll just move along. No, no, no. That's what, what she did. And it was, you know, kind of tugged on your heart to see her in that situation, but she did not, was not interested in taking anybody up on, on getting a safe bed, getting food, getting any coaching that she needed. She just was going to move along. And, and it was sad, but I thought to kind of underscore what Councilmember San Antonio was saying, I, I thought it was extremely professional and extremely empathetic in delivery and sincere and I was impressed. And this was a lieutenant who didn't go out and patrol every night. He happened to be working OT because probably a staffing shortage during the summer, that's, that Saturday night. So I, I say that because I do believe we're applying the laws correctly and we're trying to get to the intent here, which is to get the people to accept services and get them to a safe place and get them to food and, and in the majority of their cases, probably 60, 70%, help them get off drugs. That's really what, so many of the problems we run into, Dave runs into down at the Rock Garden nearby, there are people that are habitual substance abuse disorder people and along with even psychosis. And we need, they need help and, and we need tools to help get them there and our sheriff is walking that line. Lastly, of course, we've spent how many months now? Almost a little under a year without a real HOPE team because we had the, the two, we had two, but then one never really worked out and the other one left us. So we've been without that function for a while and we're on the path now to get it back in place. We've led the contract and we should have them onboard shortly. So I think we'll have the full complement with housing navigator, two caseworkers, sheriffs. And I just want to get this language cleaned up. And so I support the spirit of what we're talking about here. I think there are two things that need to be fixed. Number one, we need to, I don't think it's clear that it is a prohibition against camping on private and on public property because it, we're only making changes under the one, under public. And number two, I'd like to see us merge a lot of the definition, specifically including possessions, keeping storage of possessions. I think that's one of the key differences between habitation and visiting. And, you know, so if we, if we saw those two kinds of changes and then have it brought back.
But it's on there. It's, it's.
I didn't see storage of personal items.
So you want to add specifically storage of personal items?
Yeah.
Those are, those are personal items, you know, that they're looking for, but if you want specifically storage of personal items.
Yeah, yeah. Because I think that, to me, that is a key difference between living accommodations, using it as a living accommodation versus using it as recreation down there, wherever it might be. It might be in the bushes by the freeway. It might be at one of our parks. The difference is, do they have all their worldly possessions with them everywhere they go and, and, you know, because it's not just at Moonlight Beach we're talking about. We're talking about in the brush down at Cardiff. We're talking about next to the railroad tracks. We're talking about in the brush down at Cardiff, we're talking about next to the railroad tracks behind the lumberyard, we're talking anywhere throughout.
Citywide.
Citywide, citywide, absolutely. So that's, that's what I would entertain. I don't think we're going to craft the wording tonight to do, do a first reading, but I'll, I'll yield, and to Councilmember O'Hara.
So some clarification. At night was looked to be removed because at, and taken out because essentially it's an, it's an obscure word, or verbiage in there. At seven o'clock right now, it's dark out, it's at night.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock in July, it's still daytime. And so we needed to define that, and then we picked, we picked to do it based on taking that obscurity out of the law, or out of the ordinance, rather. Secondly, I want to explain trespassing, and I leave it open to the sheriff. And I want to bring the mayor into this. We, we met with a retailer on the 101, I'm going to leave it at that, who filed for trespassing, and it took, do you remember, it was six months? It took six months, and it required the property owner to file it. So we're not talking about trespassing here, that's not even in this conversation. Is that, is that an accurate statement to the sheriffs? Is that, we're really not talking about trespassing here?
Well, if you're talking about camping on private property, aside from 602 of the penal code trespassing, I think, yeah, those are two diff, well, they're obviously maybe even doing both, but camping on private property is still illegal per the municipal code of 9.01010.
Correct, trespassing requires the property owner to file, and it.
Correct, or request law enforcement's presence to request them to be removed.
Correct.
And notarized letter, too.
Correct, notarized letter.
To have a standing order against trespassing, they need a notarized letter.
Yes.
On file, that's good for, is it one year or six months?
One year for a no trespass authorization.
So they got to do it every year, go to a notary.
So we're not really, none of these are about that, and so we shouldn't mix and match laws.
Fair enough.
The, the other side of that is, and we did talk about this last time, it was debated, I think, between you and I, Deputy Mayor. There are times where somebody is camping on private property, and there is not a property owner to connect with, to, to contact. But something is going on where they're, these people may need help, they do need to be dressed, the neighbors don't feel safe, whatever it is, the sheriffs need the ability to check in. That is why public and private property are on here, to, to enable the sheriff to act when a property owner is not available to contact. And we absolutely discussed that before, I just want to make that clear. So these are all, just for the sake of, for the sake of clearing up, I think those points are really, really important to this, otherwise we get on this direction where we're pretending this is something it isn't. This is a tool for our sheriffs to do their job better, to provide services to people that need it, to enact safety for our public in the meantime, and just essentially do their jobs better. And that's our job as a city council, to provide them with the tools that they need to be effective and keep everybody safe in a, in a position to, to improve or enjoy their quality of life. And that's what I think these do. I do support the mayor, so I 100% think we should move forward 9.01.010. I do agree with the mayor, I think, and I appreciate the city manager bringing out that definition by Carlsbad. I think that's a great one for us to build off of. So I'm going to wait for a motion, but that's about where I'm at right now.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Okay, so we have the motion, I would add to the motion if we added storage of personal items, and then to pick up Carlsbad's verbatim of what not, what camping is not. So I'll say I would motion, you know, keep the motion and add to it specifically that storage of personal items, what camping is not. As far as the personal property, I think we were, the last discussion, if I'm, if my memory serves me right, we were talking about specifically the Vaughn's parking lot off Santa Fe, just west of the 5, and the idea that there was people on the, on the most eastern edge that were camping during the day, and the property owners, as you said, this, I don't think this is the resident owner in this case, the, you know, the private residents around the city. This was specifically those types of locations where the sheriff can come on-site and can't do anything specifically because of what you just said. So do we need to say the property, you know, do we need to say something of that nature to minimize that it doesn't happen at a residence where, heaven forbid, I've got my cousin over sleeping in my driveway in his camper, and all of a sudden the sheriff's there, you know, giving him a hard time kind of thing? Is, do we need to?
So like, private property without permission of the owner or resident? I think that's how we do it for trespassing, right?
What's the, what's the wording we need again? This, again, the specific conversation was around a parking lot that was in town, that was private, so that the sheriff couldn't do anything, but it was an obvious issue that would have taken that time to get, get a hold of it. It was, you know, there were customers that were patrons of the different businesses, the sushi restaurant, the gym, that were having issues with these individuals, but the sheriff couldn't do anything about it. And that's a very specific, you know, example. But we also, again, if somebody's, you know, your cousin rolls into town, whoever rolls into town, and they're parking in your driveway, and all of a sudden we get, you know, a knock on the door kind of thing, you know, trying to figure that out. So I don't, we don't want to have those kinds of issues. Now we have, you know, people coming in, you know, that are staying with somebody for a day, two, you know, three, whatever, kind of on their, their way through.
But they're there with permission of the property owner?
Correct, but they, you know, I guess this, in this case, you know, 20 years from now, 10 years from now, kind of going back to that bigger picture, where, you know, not the same sheriffs, not, not the people listening to this now are trying to enforce what they're reading, and that would give availability, if you will, to get that overreaching arm of, of the government. And that's, that's what we're also minimizing, we don't want to have that as well.
So where I'm going is, I'm sorry to hop in here, but just to clarify, the, that what it does not include, we had that list, it would also not include camping with the permission of the property owner on private property. That's all I was trying to get at.
Okay, got it. Can we add that to the, all right, the motion? So I'll leave my motion, do you have something to say, Jim?
No, I actually think the mayor just hit it.
Got it. So I would, that's my motion as it stands, and it'll be exactly as it's worded here with the storage of personal items added. And then it'd be storage of personal items, and then it would just list all of those. So the storage of personal items might be after, for the purposes of this chapter, storage of personal items, not, you know, not, including but not limited to camping weather, whether on public or private property, evidence of such.
And to clarify, the personal items is personal property in the Carlsbad code. So personal property, I think, is what we want.
Okay. And then, then also using, I would say, do we want verbatim from what Carlsbad is using as far as their, what camping is not?
Yeah, I like it.
We'll just take that straight out of there, and then add it to ours. Is that, does that work for you ladies? Okay.
Counsel, if I could ask a clarifying question. Do I include a totality of the circumstances requirement, which is present in Carlsbad code?
I think that's in their own, their own schooling, but yes, if we, would it be? I'll ask everybody else, what do you guys think?
You'd recommend it?
It's been used in other codes, it certainly clarifies things.
Sure, and it gives flight to exactly what he was saying earlier, and it makes sure that they're using the totality. Obviously, the report would have to substantiate, they're not going to come in and say, hey, you had, you had a fork in your sitting, and you're, you know, here in the parking lot, and now we're going to give you a ticket for, for camping kind of thing. So yes, it's a totality model. So that's my motion.
And staff, I went ahead and emailed you the code from Carlsbad. Thank you, we do have a copy.
Okay, do you have a second yet? Okay. And anybody else want to speak? And we want to read it back, I think.
So what I have right now is introducing ordinance 2025-15 with the amendments to include the wordage, storage of personal items, taking Carlsbad definition of what camping is not, and then also something regarding personal property, and then also what Tarkwin said to include the totality of circumstances similar to Carlsbad's.
Yes.
Yeah, the, the one that you weren't sure was camping on private property.
Permission.
Yeah, with permission of the owner or resident. That is not camping in the sense, if you have permission.
Okay.
So just, just to clarify, so subsection A, camping on, sorry, subsection, just, there was no subsection, 010, camping on private property, it's only unlawful if you do not have the prior permission of the owner.
Yeah, then he just said that.
But I mean, the existing code.
Oh, got you.
So it doesn't really need to be modified to affect council.
And I think what we're talking about camping on, oh, I see, okay. What I want to make sure is that the definition we're providing, the way Carlsbad structures the code is they have camping as a definition, or camp as a definition, and then it applies to both equally, and I think we ought to do the same thing here. Add, move that whole verbiage, the detail down there, the, the new added stuff under, it's almost like we go camping is, and we define it there, that really should be in a definitions section and apply to both equally.
Right, well, we can, we can add a separate section, a separate section numbered in line.
Definitions.
To define what camping is.
And then, and then everything we just did to say what camping is and camping isn't in section 9.01 would apply to all of 9.01 as a definition, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So can we add that to the initiative, and then I'll read it to you next?
Please add that.
Okay, great.
All right, good. You have the benefit of the Carlsbad code in front of you, so you get to read it. But, but I, I think I understand the proposed amendments, and I think it really does help clarify, so I appreciate it. And Deputy Mayor, I will also email that to the rest of council.
Good. So we have a motion, a modified motion, and a second. Do we need to read red back one more time? We have the tape, too. So clerk, you okay?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to call the question.
Motion carries unanimously and takes us to item 10C.
Okay, now the question is, it's two hours, would that be a good time for a break? I would say, yeah, okay. So we'll take a, it's going to be a 15-minute break, because it, I'll say 10, but it always works out to be 15, so 15-minute break, be back at 15 after sharp.
I didn't see anything.
Oh.
Yes, right.
To provide feedback on the structure and governance of this proposed commission and directions on next steps. Thank you.
Does that conclude the report? Okay. Do we have public speakers?
We do not.
We do not? Okay. Wow. So, we will open it up. Do I have anybody that would like to hop in there? Maybe Councilmember O'Hara.
Sure. Extremely excited to see this come to council. I do want to thank our staff and city manager for helping put this report together. And I want to thank the chambers, the chamber, rather, Chamber of Commerce and the 101s for all participating in this process. You know, I think one of the things I've talked about for a long time is the challenges of businesses and the direct connection to the city. While they provide a lot and they actually account for a lot of our community and a lot of the attributes that we enjoy in this community, quite often, there's a disconnect when it comes to the city, the challenges they face as businesses and the solutions that the city comes up with. And most often, it's because we're coming at it from different sides, or there's multiple channels that have to go through to get something done, or the chamber will get a message about something that really isn't their scope and their focus of what they're trying to do, which is focus on our economic prosperity, creating gateways to our city, those aspects. They'll get something that is a little bit off that or one-off and takes them away from their challenge. And so, I think what we've really put together here is a proposal that's designed to create a tool for our 101s, our chamber, our businesses first and foremost, and of course, a great activation through the city. I'm going to look forward to what our councilmembers have to say about this. I think this is going to be a fantastic asset to the city. I'm going to take a moment and rest.
Oh, wow. Deputy Mayor Lines. I'm sorry, I was surprised.
Took us off guard. I just wanted to thank Councilmember O'Hara for working with the chamber and the 101s. I'm happy to see this is nicely organized, easy to digest, and it's also, it has received support from the stakeholder groups that are represented mostly here tonight. And I would, I support this moving forward. I see the value of Encinitas putting together this commission to help us with the economic development and the broad range of business-related activities. I look forward to seeing how it moves forward and how it organizes itself and how it puts together a work plan and how the commission gets structured. So, I just want to say I support this and I appreciate the efforts put behind it to move it forward. Thank you.
Councilmember San Antonio.
I am very excited for this. I have a 38-year-old business on the 101, started by my dad, and then I took over. Being on the 101 has been great. I think when I have met with our business development group, we have gone to meet other businesses on the El Camino corridor and along with, you know, Michael and the chamber, I talked to the 101s as well, not about this, but just in general, for signs. But it's, I think when I went to my first business meeting with one of the businesses, I, you know, I wasn't sure what to expect. I went there, we talked, and they truly wanted help. They truly asked like, hey, what do you guys think, what can we, what can you, how can you help us, whether it's increased traffic, or how can we help with signage, which I was happy to help. But it's like, all these things, they actually wanted to know what we as a city could do to help them, which to me, I was happily surprised. I, like I said, I wasn't sure what to expect, but when they actually asked what we could do, it was refreshing because if you ask me, I'm like, oh, no, I'm fine. But it was nice to hear. And I know when I talked to some of the businesses on the 101, completely unrelated to this, I mentioned, and this was, you know, earlier in the year, when I heard that Councilmember O'Hara wanted to bring something like this to fruition, I was like, okay, well, how can we, you know, I mentioned it to them and they were excited. They wanted to be a part of it. So, it was exciting to see the groundswell from something that was an idea that I heard Councilmember O'Hara, and he mentioned it to me in passing, too. It wasn't like we had talked about this, he wanted, it was, hey, I'm thinking about this. And I kind of kept in the back of my mind, because I talked to a lot of the business owners down on the 101, and it just became something bigger. And I really am excited for what this can bring to the community, what it can bring to the businesses, what it can bring to the El Camino corridor, because I know that that seems to maybe be a little bit, maybe it's not so talked about since the downtown, right on the coast, we always talk about it, it seems to be, you know, the big thing we always talk about is the downtown, but, you know, we do a lot of our shopping, a lot of our things, daily life down on the El Camino corridor. So, I'm excited to see what this will all bring to the city as a whole. So, I'm totally in support of this. I'll yield.
Okay. Boy, yeah, this, I looked at this and I'm going, what problem am I trying to solve? And if I look at our current business situation, and I think we're trying to avoid problems for one, which I applaud, so I support this idea. In particular, one of the problems I see is that small boutique businesses downtown are getting run out of town. And we're ending up with what I, what I think was Councilmember Holtz, he would always talk about the alcohol coffee economy. And we're ending up with plenty of coffee places, plenty of alcohol places, and less and less barber shops and boutique, smaller places, you know, we get, we're lucky, we've got some really nice high-end, but we need to make sure we keep them all. So, to the degree that this kind of commission can guarantee, or not guarantee, can encourage and enhance both downtown and citywide, so I would say, I'm looking for something that is absolutely citywide, and that includes Levenhein and El Camino Real and Lucadia and every Cardiff, and it has to look at the health of each of those individuals and maybe closer to the, what the chamber does. Other comments I have is, when I look at the composition, it's a little artificial and I think it misses some. I'm almost of a mind not to have specific industries listed, because immediately I said, well, it really doesn't cover service industries, it really doesn't cover, it doesn't allow for a retail person. I think we have to allow for a brick-and-mortar businessperson and a virtual businessperson in this, because they're all part of our economy. Let's see. Questions I have, I'll get down to questions. I want to understand what the anticipated cost due to staff time would be. I think it'd be modest, but I do want to understand what, you know, how many meetings? Six meetings a year? There's some staff time there. Now to the harder one, which is, is there a conflict of interest between the chamber or the Main Street associations and membership in this commission? Because we have MOU contracts with each of these business organizations, and to then, I want to be careful that we're, when we consider this structure here, that we possibly limit the ability of officers of those organizations being commissioners also, because I think that very definitely has potential for conflict. But, you know, other than that, I think there's a lot of work to be done. I would look to Oceanside and many, there are many other cities that have this equivalent. And then my last comment would go into, one of the things I've been pushing for is that each commission, if they can, not everyone does, but each commission should be focused on a certain purview. And a good place that I've found helpful to use to define the purview of the Traffic Commission, Planning Commission, is to use our general plan and our general plan elements. So, in the case of Traffic Commission, that would look at the circulation element, and anything within that would be their purview. Planning Commission really has two, it'd be the land use and the housing element. And so, that's their primary purview. Recreation element would be for parks and rec. And so, one thing we could consider, and I believe Oceanside has a economic development element, it's an optional element within general plan, and it's something we don't have today, but that could be perhaps one of the first, one of the tasks of the Economic Development Commission or Business Commission to help make recommendations of what should be in that general plan. And the reasoning being that we want to have a long-term vision for economic development and for businesses in Encinitas, and that's what a general plan is. So, with that, I will yield to Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, I think this is a, really a long time coming. I've seen, you see what Carlsbad has done, really what Oceanside has done over the last, really, decade and a half. They've kind of reorganized their resources and have really pulled themselves, I think, into a, or pointed themselves in a different direction from where they were those 10, 15, 20 years ago. And I think that Encinitas, as we're kind of moving into this rapidly changing business environment, everything from the brick-and-mortar to the digital era, to the nonprofit era, I'm looking at the composition of the Oceanside. I kind of envision this more as a seven, nine-person commission, but I do think that, I guess they have 11. That's pretty substantial, but I think if we were to look at the 101s plus the chamber, maybe not one of the officers, but maybe one of the members or some of that nature from each one of those that kind of, you know, speaks to, that could carry weight and could carry, I want to say, the message or making sure that it's being represented. Definitely down in El Camino, I think there's one draw here. I tell people, we don't have to have mom and pops. That's, we really like mom and pops, we want mom and pops, and I think we have a community that really would stand behind it. It's just, it's not a requirement of any community. And you can see cities all over the country that have basically been, you know, like to the mayor's point, that the little boutiques have gotten ran out of town just because they can't survive. And so, this is an attempt to do that, to bring in, you know, Scripps right now is the number-one employer in town. And so, for us to look at for ways to mix and match, to bring in some new business, and I've just spoken to a woman that's in the autonomous, the autonomous vehicle, everything from flying to on the road to under the water, more in the military application, but, you know, she mentioned that currently, the amount of money that's going into some of the new industries coming our way, that North County, San Diego is actually a really good spot because of its location to the different bases, much like the biotech in Carlsbad and La Jolla, they've kind of gotten in front of that and what they've got up on Faraday, we're missing in this, in the city. And so, if we want to protect our smaller businesses that we want to have, I think having a backup and having some of the industries, the larger industries that do pay a significantly larger amount in taxes that help guide and grow our city appropriately. So, I think this is, again, a long time coming, and I couldn't say enough good things for where this goes, but I'll leave it there for right now and get the conversation going.
Okay. And Councilmember O'Hara.
Okay. So, I'm excited that everybody up here is looking forward to this going forward. Couple of quick points. I feel like the, I know the chamber and the 101s and the staff did a lot of work on the purpose and justification, and I feel pretty solid within that. And I think that the idea of an economic development plan as part of their work plan is going to be a great idea for the first year. I think that's exactly where we want to go with this. How do we look at the whole city, the businesses? And really, what this does is, it's going to be a group of businesspeople who the direction of the solutions we're getting are directly from the people who are using the tools on the ground. And so, within that, they're looking to provide guidance to economic policy, strengthen the relationship between our 101s, and really, what, in the end, what this will do is actually allow our 101s and our chamber to function better and becomes a tool for them instead of being a burden where they can augment what they can do, focus on their main mission, the main part of their mission statement, and really connect with the Business Commission to do the aspects of what they do in connection to the city, with a direct contact and direct line through the commission to the city. Within that, I got to your discussion of conflict, and I think we addressed that quite a lot in there. And what we decided was that we wanted to use a weight of recommendation of a letter from the chamber, from the 101s, in the process, with a goal of including all of them, but not making it so we have to include them, but that recommendation carries a significant weight within that. When we got down the objective and keys, I think those are pretty straightforward and I really just covered them. But the one thing that we wanted this council to discuss, and staff, you can step in, was 4A. And I think we've kind of kicked it around a little bit up here. And I think this is really the challenge of how do we make it inclusive? How do we make it fit the broad scope of different businesses? Because when you sit here at first, your mind obviously goes to one type of business in town, the business that you probably frequent, whether it's a coffee shop, whether it's a shop on the 101, whether it's Target, whether, but Scripps, who is one of our, who's our biggest employer in the city, may not pop right out. So, we want to make sure that from smallest employer to largest employer, there's a place for them on this. And I think we're looking for council to have some input on that, on where we go with that, that group and how we set that up. And it's certainly open for discussion. I think, I think 4B and 4C, we felt very confident and we thought they were great places to start. We started off with two-year terms, staggered, and a maximum of two consecutive terms and bi-monthly or every other month meetings. We thought that this would be a great way for businesses to join without being overburdened. You know, business owners are, a lot of them, some of them have more, the employees who do a little more work and they have more time, some of them are sole proprietor and they are, you know, 24/7, but they want to be involved in their community. So, bi-monthly, we felt was a good place to start. That can always be augmented down the road and adjusted, just like we did for the Public Health and Safety Commission. Operational details, support and reporting is pretty much consistent with what we would see with any other commission in the city. And I believe the cost would be relatively straightforward, and I assume with the city manager, I could say, consistent with what we see in other commissions, most likely. And then, examples of subcommittees, I think, are, this is just a starting point to kind of get the, get the wheels moving, but I love the addition of the economic development plan, and I love that this council's looking for ideas for those subcommittees. I think we can already see that there's going to be a lot. I definitely, before we vote, would love everybody's input on the, on 4A. I think the chambers, staff, and 101s would all appreciate that as well. I'll rest for now.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lines.
I'll think about 4A. I don't have anything right now to share on that, but I was thinking, as I was hearing us talk up here, the, number two, the vision and mission, I think it would be important for this aggregate of people led by staff to further think about our vision statement and mission statement regarding Encinitas, because we're not just, we're not San Marcos, we're not Vista, we're not Carlsbad. We are Encinitas, we're very unique. We have certain attributes, and I might call them assets. We have, you know, we're surfing, we are art, we are culture. We talk about this a bit in our cultural tourism that Councilmember O'Hara and I chair. What, I have spoken with the executive director of the San Diego Economic Development Council in the past, who's very smart, very skilled, does well leading that group, and his insights to me are, what he would tell any city, he says, he would tell any city, who are you and how do you want to put that forward to the world? How do you want to use that as a structure for where you're going as far as economic development in the future? Because, yes, Scripps may be a large employer, they may not, and we have others, we get a lot of tax income from our auto dealers, but is that who we are? And we can acknowledge them as contributors to economic development and acknowledge that role that they play. But when we are putting all of our hearts and souls and energy together to develop an economic development strategy for us, for Encinitas, I think it's important to do it with the lens of who specifically are we, what's unique and what are our attributes? And how can we position everything we do to really elevate all of that for the community? And I think that comes in with the vision statement and mission statement. And I think it's just good work that can still be done, and I would look forward to us doing it. The other thing I wanted to mention, too, which would be in six, item six, operational details, just based on employers I have talked to. And I, I've talked to many employers, but the one, the conversation I had with the CEO for Flock Freight resonates with me on the business retention and expansion item. Prior, Councilmember Hinsey and I went to meet with the CEO, and this is under 6B. And so, we got his input, we, you know, how are you doing here as a business? What do you think? And then, we said, what, what would you say is your biggest barrier? And he said, housing for my employees. So, and he talked a bit about that. And I would love for us to pay attention to how that plays into businesses being able to locate in our city. And it's not specifically shown here, but maybe it's under business retention and expansion. If you can't get your employees, it creates a problem, it creates a barrier. It's like everything else, barriers just need to be identified, and we need to make it transparent and make it a target to try to fix and try to address. I'll yield.
Okay. And let's see, some of the questions we wanted to address would be 4A. I'm, I think we take off the industry requirement, because I think you, I like the, having one from D1, D2, D3, D4 at a minimum. I like the geographic distribution, but defining what, you know, nonprofit, you have to be an employee of a nonprofit? Does it have to be registered here as an Encinitas with an Encinitas address? Banking, finance, same thing. I think we have quite a few businesspeople that work, live here, work with businesses that do work here. I think we're too limiting in this definition. I want to encourage startups. I want to, I want to, we have quite a, quite an innovative and industrious electorate here. And my concern with these six definitions is that they say, if you're not in that box, you know, I've got one slot for you, the other, the seventh box, so.
Yeah, and we vacillate, they'll tell you in the meetings, we vacillate about like, how to, how to fit everybody in there, but make sure it's broad and to, it's also the same.
And that's what we're elected for. That, that's why we're up here to choose. And I think we can do that, and we can, we can select good people. The other thing, so, some of the experience I've seen on Sandeg is, Sandeg and the audit committee requires certain skill sets on some of the different committees for the, especially the working groups. And they're hard to fill. It's hard to find a person willing to volunteer with the right qualifications and also the right spirit and desire, that also has a CPA or whatever it might be. And I think we're going to find that difficult and limiting in a way that we didn't even anticipate. So, I like the recommendation approach for the Main Streets and all and then Chamber, but I would strike the six lines and just say, it's up to the council to decide, you know, the makeup and put a guideline in there that we want to have big and small, you know, but employees of various businesses supporting the Encinitas economy, something much more generic. So, that's one. You know, we talk about, I love the comment about building to our strengths, you know, who are, who are we? What do we want to be? That, that is exactly what our general plan is. And so, this, this is perfect. If we put together an initial strategic plan, we could then morph it and put it into the economic development element. One thing I would like is that locals write it. I know we've got Dennis Caden, who helped on our general plan. Our general plan was written by locals, and every element that's been rewritten by consultants, I haven't liked nearly as much as I liked the original. So, I'd like to have homegrown economic development elements primarily written by locals with what minimal outside consultants we need to make them legal. Now, the good thing about the economic development element, it's not a mandatory one, it's much less subject to all the laws. The other reason I like doing the strategic plan as a general plan is that by definition in California, they have to, all the elements, whether it's housing, land use, economic development, if you have one, circulation element, all have to be consistent with one another. It's mandatory in state law. And so, we talked about, one of the, one of the bits of feedback from the bigger companies is, we have trouble housing our people. This would make it that the housing element has to be consistent with the economic development. For example, they, if the economic development says, hey, we want a business park where we can employ, you know, a factory or something like that, we should also then be solving for the housing for those people. And if we don't, then maybe we shouldn't have a business park with a factory. And quite frankly, do we really want a factory? Because going back to that original concept, is that who we are? And I think the answer is no. We're much more of a bedroom community, as it were, and I don't think we have the same space that San Marcos or Carlsbad have. So, that's why, that's why I'm arguing for the, getting it to the element. One other area would be, what is it, 4C, term. I think I would prefer doing something more consistent, not two-year, but going to three-year. I like the three-year because I don't want the terms to be in exact sync with the council elections. And so, I think that's one of the reasons we went with three. I like the two-term term limit. I think it makes the math work out better, and you tend to have people bleed, bleed over or serve over. So, I would go for three. Trying to think, anything, anything else? Yeah. Yeah, with, and like I say, you know, one of my goals is to look at Vauri. They started here, right? You know, I want to encourage more startups like that to start here and build, and I think we have that kind, those kind of people living here. So, the more we can encourage them to start their business here, even if they, if they're super successful, they may move on, but so be it. And that's, I think that's my comments in the areas. I don't know if there's, I'm sure I'll have more. So, with that, I will yield to Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go back to 4A. I think the composition, I think when I saw that we have seven, I see that Oceanside has 11. I think that maybe a happy medium might be in the nine, to make sure that we can, we can get a broader brush of the different, again, the different aspects of who we are, what we're trying to be.
And if you don't mind me interjecting, we do have commissions that have a range. And so, we could make it minimum of five, maximum of nine, and then let the council decide if they, you know, if they, A, have enough people to fill it, and B, want to fill it fully.
Yeah. That's great. I think seven, I think seven's kind of a, probably a minimum, just because I'm, you know, the, the three 101s and the chamber, that right there is four, that we really want to make sure that we're hearing from on a more consistent basis, but more connected to the city in this case, to making sure that, I think the message getting back to the businesses also might be a little bit smoother in this regard because of the nature of the commission. So, I think a range from seven to 11 would probably be in what I'd be in favor of. The exact breakdown of that, I think, I think the bullet points that we have there, what is it, six bullet points? I think there's, that's a good starting point. I don't think it's a requirement for any of those. I think with 4B, I've got a little bit more issue with where, bullet point two, it says must-own and operated business in Encinitas established at least one year with an active business license. I think that we're minimizing, you know, some industries, we're minimizing people that have real, real knowledge on business and industry, just maybe not in the ownership side. And I think it's good to have a couple of those, but I don't think that has to be, that one I'd want to strike as a requirement. I think it's a, maybe if there was a point system or whatever, that, you know, that could be a two-point benefit, but doesn't necessarily, because there's, there's some amazing, again, we have top of industry somewhat in the world, and, you know, there's people in this community that can, that can pick up the phone and call the top in the top of the world in business and industry. So, I wouldn't want to minimize anybody that, like Mayor said, that has the motivation, that has all the skills, has the desire, but doesn't have that one thing, and that would be a limiting factor. Outside of that, I do like the three-year term limits. I like the way that we set up the first-year appointments will be structured for staggering, so whatever we land on for that year, whether it's seven, nine, 11, to have that, the way, however we structure that, so they're staggered going forward. Outside of that, I like Outside of that, I like the setup and the initial base model of the, the rest of this, this document. I also appreciate the, the Oceanside's variations on a lot of their bylaws. I think it's ninety, ninety, I would say 98% there minus a couple of things that are specific to Oceanside. But outside of that, I like the, the way that they have set up and I'd be all for pressing go on this. I'll, I'll yield.
Okay. Councilmember O'Hara.
Okay. So just real quick, then I'm going to actually make a motion. I think we should move on this. The, we did kind of, we went, we went pretty deep on the concept, the council, councilmember Schaefer, the must own, operate a business in Encinitas, establish at least one year with an active business license. And we felt that it was important for a lot of reasons. We wanted to make sure that A, we could confirm they had a business and then they, to use a term that's been used up here before, where they have skin in the game. And so we, we did want to make sure that the people who are operating a business in this community, most affected by it because they live here, were who this is, who this is geared towards. Because I think in our, in our thoughts was A, they represent the businesses, but they also represent what councilmember, deputy mayor, rather, Lyons mentioned in this idea of encompassing the vision of Encinitas. And so that was why we put that line in there that way. And, and so I would want to keep it.
Could we make it so that a portion of the, the commission, so a, you know, a majority, or if we do, if we chose nine, that five have to, you know, that's a requirement of five of them. So that's kind of a leg up for those five instead of having a pointed system where there's four openings. Again, we have, you know, very, that's good for the business side of the, the commission, but the economic development side may be missing some of the other experiences or values.
I get it. We have, we have some great resources in the community of people who operate businesses all over the place. I, I think we need some sort of a qualifier and that's really what this is, to make sure that we are in fact getting an active business person. And how do they prove that? Physically proven, that's with the licenses, it's with the history.
It would be the same way with a resume. The resume would say, I mean, we just, we just hired some attorney, you know, we just, you just looked it up, what the attorney, one of the, the, the lead partner is a first of his class in, at Harvard. I mean, that, I don't need to see that he owns a business to know that he's pretty probably phenomenal at his skills. So I think there's more than enough ways to, to merit somebody's skills or their, their value other than owning a business in this town. I, I, I think that's a value, it's massive value. And I think again, four or five out of the nine, that'd be great to make it a requirement so that, that kind of sets aside four or five of the positions for owners.
So I think what you need is an objective metric in there. And I don't know what that would be, but they'd have to produce any amount of business license. They'd have to produce the fact that they're somehow a pay stub, something. And, and I think we're open to have, we, I'd be open to have that discussion with it. But it's got to be something solid so that we don't get somebody who come to find out isn't the CEO of world's biggest company, coming to find out they're, they're, they're not that, they're just not. But the resume said it. So I, I think it's important for the businesses to, to either A, obviously be a resident and then within that have some sort of proof of either being an owner operator of a business in that regard.
I, I won't support that specifically. I just, it just, it, it's limiting to, to, again, might be good for the business side of the commission, but from the economic development side, I don't see it. It, it's lacking vision. It's lacking some, some other areas that we.
I disagree.
Especially in the digital space, right?
I disagree. The, the, I think our business owners have a very good grasp on, on future and ideas. In fact, that's what, that's what pushes this. They're going to come to City Hall with a lot of really efficient ideas. They're going to come to, they're going to come from the other end of the stick that city, that city currently goes to them with, and they're going to have vision. They all want to succeed. All the, all the business owners in Encinitas, none of them want to fail. They, they're looking, what are, what are the way we can use the resources in the city? How can we benefit from the city? How can we be an asset to the city? Because they know if they do that, they'll prosper as well.
The, the point that I'm saying is that you're saying that's the only way. By limiting that and putting that in there, it's requiring that's the only way? And there's, again, somebody, again, a digital warrior that's got, you know, great skills that might have the actual time, maybe because of that, or somebody that's very, you know, there's a lot of salespeople that live in this town because of the makeup of this town and the, the price point and some of the, there's a lot of business owners in this town that don't necessarily live in this town because of that, that exact reason.
Right. But so I, I was like a hobbyist. I love baseball cards. Grew up with them, right? I got them at home. I, I haven't collected them for years. I could tell you I have baseball cards. Doesn't make me a baseball card expert. So we have to have some metric.
We, we look at these, all the commissions that come through here, that we see their resumes, we take it.
I think you have the floor, right?
It's okay. It's a good conversation. I appreciate the conversation. I'm, I'm looking for if you're going to turn it away, a metric. Otherwise, this is open to anybody. And that's fine if it's open to anybody, but you're not going to get as focused a result, which is really what this is supposed to be. So I'll make a motion. Everyone can, can kick it around. I, I motion to approve with an adjustment to either the vision statement or the mission statement, because I think to deputy mayor Lyons' point, we could add, we could add what she said to both, which is based on the culture and vision of Encinitas. I believe you could add that to the vision statement or the mission statement. There's a little crossover there in space for that, but I think that's a welcome addition. So I move to add that. To strike out the seven points on section four A, is it seven or six points, rather, six points? And change the, the commission to five to nine members, as the council wills. Obviously keeping the 101 Main Street Associations, Encinitas Chamber of Commerce and Visiting Encinitas, nominating a representative to apply for the commissions and adding weight to those, those nominations. Term limits, changing term limits to three years. And at this time, those are the, the changes I, I would make in this motion.
Okay. And now I've got councilmember San Antonio.
I would have to disagree with councilmember, councilman Schaefer. I think when I think about a business owner being on here, or that they have to be a business owner. For me, when I think about my business or anybody that has a business, it is their lifeblood. It is their baby. It is something they pour their heart into, their family depends on it. It is something that, not just in Encinitas, but I mean, this is something that you, you need to succeed, you want to succeed. So I think that, I guess for lack of a better term, having skin in the game, it is, it's you, you have a, a will to want this to, to work. So for me, I, I agree with councilman O'Hara that that should be in there. The last thing I would ever want is for my, to lose this legacy that I, that my, my dad has started and we be able to, to keep going. It's like it's, it's inherent in what you, when you start a business, you, you don't start it to, to fail. You start it so that you can hopefully build something that will last a lifetime or that will last years and years. So for me, when I see that, that, to me, it makes sense. So I'll yield.
Okay. I'll hop in here. So I, I guess I'd throw out kind of a rhetorical question is if I wanted to include somebody from Scripps, who has the business license for Scripps and how, how do I do that? Would I, and what I would propose is if you're an employee, employee who has a significant, whose company has a significant contribution to Encinitas, could be a single business, single sign shop, for example, or it could be Scripps, it could be a, a big retail operation like Golf Mart. You know, we, and, and as you get into a bigger organization, which I think we absolutely want represented here, you're going to need, it's not going to be the CEO or the president. They won't have time. It's, it's going to be the head of sales, it's going to be one of the, the executive level. You know, go Flock is a good example. The CEO would not be on the local business commission, but they certainly would have a government affairs person or somebody like that. So as long as they're an employee with a business who doesn't necessarily have to be headquartered here, let's take Vowari. They've got a, a shop here. I don't want to necessarily require it to be one of the shop personnel. It could be somebody from corporate who lives in Encinitas. I like the registered voter approach. But that lives here, but is with corporate and understands the dynamics of their shop down there. So that, that's where I think councilman Schaefer is coming from. So limiting it and saying you have to have a business license, I think is putting blinders on where, where we're looking at just one type of businesses.
It's not the person who has the business, it's the business has a business, an active business license. And that's not even a business license in Encinitas, that's an active business license. It just means.
Oh, 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 okay. I assumed it was in Encinitas.
No, no. It's, so, so to your point, and it's a great point. So must own, and it's own or operate. And operate, we was the, the operative word that we put in there for exactly the reason you said. The owner doesn't have time, the op, person who operates a magnitude of the, of the business, and I guess that word could be, could be shook out a little bit better or more.
Okay.
Of a business in Encinitas that's established one year and the business has an active business license. That, that's what it says in that sentence.
Oh, okay. That, that, I assumed it meant an active Encinitas business license. That, that helps immensely because that, that opens it up. I, like I say, the examples I want to make, I want to make sure Flock could have representative if they so desired, you know? And, and the council, because ultimately I'm looking for the few, this council and future councils to make the selection, interview and select the people based on their credentials and pick the, the best, most diverse group of representatives for this commission, be it five, seven or nine, whatever we decide on. So, okay. So own, operate, maybe and be payrollled or be payrollled by or?
I mean, just while we're on this, and I'm next anyway, but the idea is that.
And I yield.
I can think of four, I can think of four people that I know right now that have retired in this community because they've done so well in business. And so they live here, they have, maybe have some extra time and they have the really, they, they've done so well in business that they've been able to retire at a young age of whatever their age is in their mid 40s or 50s. And they'd be perfect for maybe giving what they have in their prowess and what they've done so successfully to come here and give them, give this their full attention. And so we're lacking a, a, a group, especially with the cost that it takes to live here and growing rapidly. We're missing a very significant group of people that, that would be able to help this grow and again, could give, could go down to the business owner who's got, you know, look at Marco's office, he doesn't really spend time in this office because he's got to be at his actual office. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is if, if he had some more ability to have, you know, and thank God he's got staff to help out, but again, as a business development model, you know what I'm saying? You, you have people here, is that?
So can I make an amendment then?
Sure.
Around this? So maybe under four A, we amend it to have the opportunity of two at-large members per the discretion.
Sure. So it, it opens it up, yeah. However we want to do it, it's the same thing as before. But yeah, two, or I'd say, because if we do 11, then two is not, you know, if it's seven, then two, if, you know, so if you had a, a certain percentage or something like that, or no.
I would keep it at two. I think when you get percentages, it gets a little wonky. And if you change the number five to nine, it gets also, I would just say two. That would be my, that would be my amendment.
Okay.
That at, at large responds to councilmember Schaefer's concern about qualification criteria?
Not the qualification criteria, but really that concept that he talked about, not wanting to leave anybody out who started, retired. We'll go way back in Bruce's wheelhouse here, Texas Instruments, and now lives here in town. And nothing but love with that comment. But, but now lives here in town, obviously knows how to run a company and, or knows a lot about business or work there. Somebody who is, and that's who you're, that's who I hear you talking about, and that's who those two spaces were for. I think, I think that idea of inclusion is, is, it's a really good idea.
I think that makes it stronger. Thank you.
Okay. So we got a motion and, and councilmember Schaefer, did I forget to hit?
No, I, I.
You're done? Are you headed?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I apologize for the Texas instrument comment.
Oh. What, what company is that? I think I interviewed with them when I came out of college.
Oregon Trail, right? Or my.
Jeez. Can anybody see the knife? I'm glad I didn't wear a white shirt. I'd be blood all over it right now. Okay. So we've got a motion and a second. Yeah, I, I will get there. And if the clerk could read that back?
So the first one is to add a vision or mission statement as stated by deputy mayor Lyons. Number two would, to be, to remove the industry requirements enlisted in four.
I think on the first one, a mission or vision statement that included the culture of Encinitas in it.
Okay.
Culture and vision.
Okay. And then like I said, number two is to remove the industry requirements. Number three was the composition of a range of five to nine members with two of those members being at large.
Mm-hmm.
And the final one was three-year terms?
Yep. With the same term limits and everything.
Same term limits.
Yeah, two-year, two-term. Okay, we have a motion second. Any other comments? And of course, this will all come back in detail some, yeah. With that, let's call a question.
Motion carries unanimously and takes us to item 10D.
Moving on to item 10D, which is contract extension and funding request for the Jewish Family Services of San Diego Safe Parking Program located in Encinitas Community and Senior Center at 1140 Oak Crest Park Drive to operate for an additional year. And the contact person is homeless program coordinator Pew and planning manager Anders. And we'll start with a staff report.
My name is Patty Anders. I'm the planning manager. And also here with me is Dr. Crystal Pew, our homeless programs coordinator, and Scott Dropkin, our development services director. And I will be presenting item 10D, which is the Jewish Family Services Safe Parking Program Extension and Funding Request. So the Safe Parking Program is consistent with the city council's strategic work plan goals 1.5 and 1.4 listed in the slide and is consistent with the housing element policy 1.7 and program 2, 2F, which requires the city to have programs to reduce homelessness. The Safe Parking Program is also a program identified in the Homeless Action Plan or HAP. So I wanted to share some background on what vehicular homelessness is. The data shows that the participants in the Safe Parking Program include families with children, single adults, retirees and even employed individuals. Program participants are more likely to be women who live in households with children. They need to be in the program, their need to be in the program is often just one or two unexpected expenses that put them there. And they are less likely to be chronically homeless. Vehicles offer relatively safe and safety and privacy and mobility, but lack access to sanitation and utilities. Participants are less likely to have severe behavioral health or substance abuse issues and more likely to accept services when available. Participants are often closer to being housing ready than those who live in tents or encampments, meaning they have less barriers to be housed and the cost to house them is less than, it costs less money to help them find permanent housing. So wanted to provide some background on the program. On October 28th, the city council adopted REZO 201885 declaring a shelter crisis pursuant to SB 850. On January 2020, council adopted REZO 202003, which confirmed the shelter crisis and approved establishment of a North County Safe Parking Program. In January 2020, JFS Safe Parking Program began at the Leach Tag property. And in September 2021, it was relocated to the Encinitas Community and Senior Center located at 1140 Oak Crest Park Drive. In September 2020, the governor signed AB 2553 Shelter Crisis Declarations. In September 2020, the Governor signed AB 2553 Shelter Crisis Declarations, which revised the definition of a homeless shelter to include a parking lot allowed for safe parking. AB 2553 was amended in September of 2024 by SB 1395 to extend the expiration date of the shelter crisis to January 2036. In June 2022, City Council adopted REZO 2022-59, approving extension of the JFS program to June 30th of this year. In June of this year, the City Council approved a six-month extension for the program until December 31st of 2025, and they adopted REZO 2025-68, authorizing an extension of the use permit. So, knowing that the program expired at the end of the year, staff coordinated with JFS on available options to extend the program. JFS indicated that grant funding from the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, or RTFH, and future grant funding was uncertain, indicating that they would likely need to end the program. So, staff requested JFS to provide a budget to continue the program. Staff reviewed the budget and asked JFS to identify areas of reduction. JFS responded that budget reductions weren't possible to maintain the program integrity. Staff then proposed a six-month, city-funded option to allow JFS time to identify additional funding. JFS responded that a full year of funding and the amount of just under $610,000 would be required to continue the program. JFS also informed staff that they were slowing down accepting clients into the program in anticipation of the program ending, and that they had been referring clients to other programs. So, the $610,000 full-year funding request to continue the program would require an off-cycle general fund budget appropriation in the current fiscal year 2025-26 of $305,000. The remaining $305,000 would be requested in the next fiscal year 2026-27 budget. JFS would enter into a professional service agreement with the city for a total of $610,000 to operate the program for one additional year. So, I'd like to share some of the existing program outcomes. The program has 25 spaces, and JFS tracks program measures, reports the outcomes to the city monthly, and posts weekly data on their website. Since program inception in 2020, JFS has served approximately 306 unduplicated individuals, 78 of which were Encinitas residents, which is about 25% of total participants. Based on the monthly data reports provided by JFS, the overall program utilization rate is approximately 65%. Over the last year, from October 24 to September 25, JFS has served 49 unduplicated individuals with a utilization rate of 68%. JFS has indicated that they've had staffing issues and would need to hire more staff to continue the program for an additional year. So, the scope of work for the proposed one-year extension is listed here, and would be similar to the existing services, including but not limited to intakes, referrals, case management, and housing navigation services, basic needs assistance, employment assistance, and trauma-informed care. So, if the council extends the program, the city would include reporting requirements listed on the slide to ensure the city receives accurate daily and monthly data, and would require periodic updates to City Council and staff to ensure the program is successful. So, this slide shows a breakdown of the total cost for the year, with personnel being the largest cost, and security being the second highest expense. It is important to note that the use agreement prepared by the city requires a security guard to be on-site from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM, seven days a week. Again, the total cost, JFS is requesting to operate the program for the year is just under $610,000. So, since the city had not contributed direct funds to the program before, staff conducted research on the cost of operating other safe parking programs in the county to help assess if the $610,000 requested budget was in line with the operating cost of other programs. The information staff found was high-level, cost estimates based on publicly available data. The most similar program is in the city of Vista, which has 25 spaces, and is also operated by JFS at a similar cost of $600,000. As shown in the slides, some of the programs have fewer spaces, and they have higher operating expenses, but may offer additional services. And JFS has shared that they're opening a new 40-spaced program in City Heights at an existing elementary school with a total budget of $593,000, which was approved in November of this year by the San Diego Housing Commission. This project was funded with $250,000 general fund money from the city of San Diego, and $343,000 from RTFH grant funding. JFS has informed staff that this new program in City Heights is for families only, and some of the services offered to the children are provided through the school district, which contributes to this lower operating cost. So, staff discovered just this evening that the RTFH Notice of Funding Opportunity, or NOFA, was, has been released. Staff will be reviewing the NOFA to determine if safe parking programs are in eligible activity. This is the funding that JFS has relied on in the past, as I mentioned. The grant application deadline is December 15th of this year, and the anticipated HUD award date to RTFH is May 1st of next year. So, that's new news since our briefing. So, staff is seeking City Council direction on the two proposed options, or other council-desired options. The first option would be to provide JFS with the total $610,000 to fund the program for the full year, or option two is to not extend the program and not provide the requested funding. If the City Council direction is to extend the program and the use agreement, the following actions are required. To authorize the city manager to execute a professional consulting agreement for the Safe Parking Program in the amount not to exceed $610,000. Adopt Resolution 2025-120, authorizing a 12-month extension of the use agreement for the Safe Parking Program at its current location. And adopt REZO 2025-120, amending the fiscal year 2025-26 budget. This concludes staff's presentation. We are available, as well as JFS staff, are here to answer any questions and would like to make a presentation.
Do we have any questions of clarification? I've got one or two. The, do we know on the notice, and I know this is just this evening even, the Notice of Funding Availability, it said it would be awarded May 1st, 2026. Would that be when the allowable expenses could be incurred, or could they be incurred beforehand and reimbursed on, starting on that date?
So, since we just got it a few hours ago, we'd have to look at the details and see if that's, they let you spend in advance.
Okay. Another question is, back when we originally approved this in 2018, did we have the Buena Creek Navigation Center, or the Hope team, or the caseworkers available?
No.
Okay. How about in 2021, when we extended it? I'm not quite sure of the timing there. Do you...
I believe our first, Stephen started in 2022, I think it was?
Okay, so, no, and I know we didn't have, we certainly didn't have the Buena Creek Navigation Center, because we just went through the one-year anniversary, so, okay. And then, the cost split in the past, like last year, the total budget for the Safe Parking Lot, and how much was paid for out of Regional Task Force for the homeless grant, and how much was funded by JFS themselves?
My handy-dandy notes.
Yeah.
RTF paid approximately $317, and JFS was $223.
Okay. And that's, those are my questions for clarification, so, Councilmember O'Hara.
Quick question. Quick question on the Buena Creek Navigation Center. Do we know what our average cost per person is to put somebody there?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Well, let me back up a sec. All right. All right, I'll hold for a moment.
Okay. With that, we'll move to public testimony, and we have...
We have 22 speakers at the moment.
How many of those have time donation, too?
Four of them.
Four of them, so we have the equivalent, so that's well over an hour. I'm going to reduce it to two minutes, and we'll do it right now, so hopefully, we won't be here too late, but we'll be probably past 10 o'clock at this rate.
First three speakers, Helen Born, followed by Molly Hentleyan and Patty Skottermeyer.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers, we really need the Safe Parking Program. So, all I can say is I really would support, I urge you to really commit to funding this for the entire year, 2026. And it does provide a safe place to park for people who are experiencing that, and dignity and all that. So, anyway, I really ask you to commit to funding this for the 2026. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Molly Hentleyan, District 2. This is a tough topic. How did we get here? Why is this a demand onto the city to fund it at 100% at this late date? This is not like, doesn't feel like a partnership being formed in collaboration with a nonprofit addressing an issue. It's an awkward situation. The city has approved, as we all know, the $344,000 for the San Diego Rescue Mission, which I commend the staff for all their work that they did to evaluate the proper vendor and partnership. We need to have a consistent approach to how we help the people in our city, and as the mayor just pointed out, we have a lot of services in place that we haven't had in the last five years, and they're recent. The Buena Vista Navigational Center, and now we have the San Diego Rescue Mission. So, we need to have a consistent approach to how we help our people, having a consistent path to outreach for our sheriff, so they don't have to dial three different services. We need a main point of contact, and now we have that in place, hopefully soon, with the contract we just signed. So, having duplicative resources is confusing, and having a point of contact is critical. So, my concerns are that the JFS is asking for 100% of this funding, and it's double the cost of what we even have budgeted. We actually don't have this item budgeted. So, I just ask that we look at, revisit this as we go through what's available.
Thank you. Patty? And following Patty will be Richard Solomon, Beth Whitaker, and James Hagan.
Mayor, Council, well, those were some good points that Molly brought up. And gee, I'm sorry there's not the funding, but I think we really need that safe parking. And you know what, maybe there's going to be a need for like 10, 20, 50 more of those parking places if artificial intelligence takes over, you know, and artificial intelligence becomes your doctor, becomes the one teacher. God help us if artificial intelligence becomes your nurse, or your council members. I'm sure Sacramento, some of those legislators up there would like to see that, because they'd like to have total control over you all. So, yes, I think we really do need that. I mean, just what was explained in the report, who the major customers are. Anyway, thank you.
Richard Solomon, are you here? I think he might have left. Beth Whitaker, and then James Hagan, and then Julie Thunder with one-time donation from Karen Caden, who is present.
Hello again. I want to start by saying that it's not fair to categorize pre-written agenda comments as insincere. It's an efficiency, and it's not fair to discount residents' chosen voice. Now, about me? I'm a local resident, but I'm also a licensed clinical social worker and a doctor of behavioral health. I share this to say that I'm well-educated on human behavior and social change. The way male council members talk about offering help and safety lacks acknowledgement of how personal the concept of safety is. What seems like help to you is not universal. I support the JFS Parking Lot because it adds to our menu of helpful options, and JFS invests in people across a spectrum of services that promotes human healing. Safe parking isn't a good fit for everyone, but it's a vital safety net, and I want my tax dollars going towards funding it. Thank you.
Councilmembers, neighbors, thank you for your time. I'm here to back extending the Safer Parking Program for one more year at a cost of $610,000. Let me cut it straight to you. Without safer parking, people end up sleeping in alleys, every alley, side streets, dark corners of the city. It's not safe for them, and it's not safe for our community. When you push people into the shadows, the problem gets bigger. More police calls, more complaints, more emergency room visits, more mess for everyone. Safer parking brings order to that situation. Without structure, it will turn into chaos. It gives people a secure, safe, supervised place to, spot to sleep. It gives neighbors a peace of mind. It gives law enforcement breathing room, and most importantly, it gives people a path out of, path out. Case managers, housing, connection, support gets them back on their feet. I want you to support that, but I also want to bring one more topic. I've got about a minute left here, so here we go. What people need isn't complicated, they just need a safe place to park. We talk a lot about all the services, but the JFS Services Program could be expanded to 25 spots extra for just safe parking. Not everybody needs all the services, me included. That's it. Not a stack of paperwork, not a counseling session, not a dozen services that I don't ask for. I just need a safe spot, park-to-spot in the city of Encinitas at night, where I can close my eyes without getting her ass ticketed. We earlier talked about the police having to talk to people in their vans. If they've got a safe place to go, the police won't have to talk to them. Give the people a place to park, you don't have to worry about whether they're sleeping, whether they're living in their van. They just need a place to go. Expanding the Safe Parking Program could be a simple, common solution, but it doesn't start without funding it to start with tonight. So, I'm highly recommending that you do it. Our neighbors, our neighbors, the dark corners, the unsafe areas that create the frustration for the residents, and the danger for the people trying to get out. A bigger, safe parking program, how's that for a good idea? It's the cheapest, most practical solution on the table. Give folks a designated place to park.
Thank you.
No tension.
Julie? And following Julie Thunder with her time donation is Jesse Mendez with the time donation from Mike Phillips and Kaylee Levitt. Are you both present? Okay. And then Ellen Burr, and then Elena Thompson.
$610,000 that you didn't plan for, you haven't budgeted for. 306 individuals were served in the first five years, that's 61 people per year. At that, $610,000 over those five years, we're doing this for one year. If you'd had it over those five years, that would still be $10,000 per person. That doesn't make sense. If you're going to spend that much money on people, you're going to have them driving from everywhere to come to Encinitas. I hope you're serving them steak and baked potatoes for that money. I hope you'll vote for option number two, not because I want all the homeless run out of town, not because I don't think JFS has done a good job, but because you just committed a San Diego Rescue Mission, and you spent a lot of money on that. 610 is too much. Somebody's making money off of you if you do that, and that's not what we're here to do. Your job is to keep our city fiscally sound, and JFS has clearly deprioritized their parking lots. You can think about opening a city lot. That is a city lot, but that's a little different. I don't ever approve of having it where it is, but the city can do its own parking lot. Yes, having the services are nice, but you have the rescue mission come in. If, if what we need is a safe place for women and their children to sleep in their cars, make a spot, commit to hiring a security guard. It's not going to cost $610,000. So your job is to monitor our money and I hope you'll take that into account. Option two for me, please. Thanks.
Thank you for your time. Safe Parking offers an early intervention program to individuals and families that are experiencing homelessness and living in their vehicle. It is a crucial intervention that gives people their, their right to choose where they, where they can receive services. Not everybody wants to go into a congregate shelter. You don't get to choose who your bunkmates are going to be. You don't get to choose who your children are going to sleep next to. But if you have a safe parking program, you get to choose who's in your vehicle and you get to choose that safety. Our program sees about 70% of, of our enrollees that are first time homeless. As I mentioned, these are people that just fell on hard times. We don't see a lot of chronic homelessness. We don't see a lot of issues. This program has operated within the city of Encinitas for five years and do you guys have any reports of, of a rise in crime or complaints from the area? No, you don't. 25% of our clients are older adults living on fixed incomes. As we all know, here in San Diego or the county of San Diego, Encinitas, the cost of living is, is, is extremely high. So if you're retired and you're living on an income of 1,000, 1,200, 1,500 a month and you're living in your vehicle, you need a safe place to be in order to access the services that you guys are mentioning, right? As well as the services within JFS. We offer client-centered case management services. We meet every client, every household, every family where they're at. We find out what led them to become homeless. We find out what's keeping them homeless and we help them build a goal, a plan to overcome each one of those barriers, one at a time, starting with the smallest one. Why? So we can build that confidence for each household and, and start, start creating that path back into housing. I want to tell you guys about a, a single mother that came to Safe Parking. A single mother with her two children living in their vehicle, struggling to find a safe place to be. And luckily somebody just passed her, her phone number and we were able to enroll her and her kids, if you can go back to a couple slides, enroll her and her two sons into our program. This mother was struggling to find gainful employment, struggling to get her kids consistently in school, but Safe Parking provided them the stability in order for her to enroll her kids into school, get them to school safely every day and eventually find full-time employment. After being in Safe Parking, she was able to save that money and we were able to coordinate with other services, just like you guys mentioned here about the San Diego Rescue Mission or other entities that are able to provide some services, they're not able to provide all the services. This is a continuum of care and Safe Parking offers that as well to, to engage with all kinds of different, uh, other service providers. It's not a duplication of service. It is a unique service that is, that is a, that offers people choice of how they're going to receive services for homelessness. I heard you guys all talk about people, homeless individuals that you approach and to be an open to services. It's not easy to choose to be able to go into a congregate shelter, but when you encounter somebody that's living in their vehicle with their, with their children and you offer them a safe place to park rather than a dark alley or a public street or the beach, then you're giving them that choice and that dignity to choose. Now this mother, she was able to coordinate with another resource provider to subsidize her rent and so she was able to afford the rest part of her rent. But JFS, we were able to step in with private philanthropy dollars in order to help them move into that household. We found out that the mother had lost all her property in storage due to the inability to pay their storage bills and all her kids ever wanted was to be in their own room with bunk beds to share. We made that happen for them through Safe Parking. That mother exited the program and she sends us these pictures. We could go back to the kids with the, in the bunk bed. She sent us those pictures of those boys happy. I asked them, what's your favorite character? Because I wanted to ensure that we got them the bedding of their favorite characters. One wanted Marvel and the other wanted Spider-Man and that's what they got and they send us this picture. The next email I got from them about a month later, if you can go to the next picture, are those boys in their own home, celebrating their first holiday, being housed after years of living on the street and living in their vehicle. That's Safe Parking. Just recently, about two weeks ago, I got an email from that same mother. They've been housed for well over a year and I got an email from them, again thanking JFS and Safe Parking for the intervention that was offered to them. And then shared another photo of her and her husband and their newborn baby. And then last week, another photo of that baby coming home and in the arms of her big brothers. And that's, that's a clear picture of the intervention of Safe Parking. So I understand that, that, that this is a big decision for you guys to make and I, and I, and I can, I can hear that. But Safe Parking is an intervention that works and it's an intervention that provides compassion and dignity and choice to the, to the unfortunate people that are having to experience homelessness. Thank you.
This is not about the need or the value or the cost even really. This is about why are we even here? They came in June and asked for an extension to December. What happened in the meantime? Were there no other NOFAs prior to tonight? I mean, this is, this was the 11th hour of the 11th month of the 11th minute. I, I don't, it is obvious from what is stated here that they are not interested in doing this parking lot anymore. When I grew up, half a loaf was better than none. It was presumptuous to assume that we have $305,000 to spend this year on that. So I really don't even understand why we were here since they obviously were not interested in doing anything to provide funding. I'm pretty sure JFS is a large organization. This is not a little mom and pop looking for art funding on an annual basis from the city council for $20,000. No, this is a huge operation and yes, they have done a good job, but many people here are right, is that we probably should have a safe parking lot of our own and hopefully Rescue Mission could help us with that because there is some duplication of services and there needs to be one contact. And if it has to be two separate parking lots, one that is for guys in vans only, because there is such a thing as a van lifer, believe me. And you know, we've already had discussions tonight about the problems with parking and deciding whether or not they're living in it. Some people choose to do that. Surfers love to go, so.
Thank you.
We don't have the money to spend on this either way.
Following Elena Thompson is Jim Stiven with a time donation from Ken Kobayashi, who's present, and then Scott Campbell. No, you don't.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time here tonight and most importantly, thank you for your strategic plan in connection with homelessness and for really taking this issue seriously. We so appreciate your latest investments in homelessness for our city, that being not only the Buena Vista Shelter in Vista with 12 beds for homeless from Encinitas, but this latest San Diego Rescue Mission contract to the tune of $350,000 that you approved last week. That's going to include outreach and case management as well as navigation services to navigate the people living in their cars to care. Because I can tell you and everyone in this room knows, living in a car, that is not compassion politics or compassion policy and no one can say that it is. It's not even habitable. So the key is that in addition to the Rescue Mission, you've hired two new staff dedicated to the homeless situation in Encinitas and we have the sheriff dedicated to that with the Hope Team in partnership with the city. So we have a lot of resources and a lot of finances dedicated to this effort. And again, I commend you on that. And the taxpayers are footing this bill together with some grant money. But the key is fiscal responsibility. We cannot afford all the new programs you've recently put into place in addition to the new headcount and the safe parking lot. Now the safe parking lot came online in 2019 and we were promised at that time as a city that it wouldn't cost the city but $1 a year for the lease on the space. How in the world did we go from $1 to 610,000 a year? And mind you, with the stats, for five years, everyone listen to this, for five years, the numbers, I have a time donation, thank you.
Did she have a time?
Yeah, yeah. Stacy Seacrest right there. For five years, we've only had 60 people.
Elena, so.
I have her speaker slip with no time donation on it. I can't just willy-nilly.
Yeah. So, no, time out. So did Stacy turn one in?
No.
No.
She's on her link.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, Elena, I can't treat you differently than anybody else here. You, you don't, there isn't a time donation submitted unfortunately and you didn't have it on your form, so I'm sorry your time is up. I apologize, but I, I have to be fair.
Evening again, Council. Jim Stiven, I do have a time donation with a slip that's been submitted. There are many reasons why we should support funding of the JFS Safe Parking Program for another year. But my remarks tonight, we're going to be focusing simply on numbers. The first number is 135. That is the number of homeless persons found in the point in time count this last January and we know that that's likely an undercount. The second number is 12. That's the number of beds available in, for Encinitas residents at the Buena Creek Navigation Center in Vista. The next number is 25. That is the number of spaces available to JFS managed Safe Parking Lot at the Encinitas Community Center. If those spaces are taken away, simple math teaches us that even if we count the 12 beds in Vista, there would still be 123 homeless persons with no place to find safe shelter in Encinitas because there are zero other shelter spots available in Encinitas and the San Diego Rescue Mission can't solve that problem. The next number is 306. That is the number of individuals who benefited from the Safe Parking Program since its inception in 2020. And 215 or over two-thirds of those are residents of Encinitas or North County. And it should be noted that from 2020 to 2023, Encinitas was the only Safe Parking Program in North County. The next number is 45%, which is the number of positive exits reported, meaning that 45% of persons using the Safe Parking Program have been able to find housing or be reunited with family members. The next number is zero. That is the number of police interventions necessitated by any disturbances at the Safe Parking Program. Zero is also the number of complaints registered by Oak Crest Middle School staff over the course of the operation of Safe Parking in the Encinitas Community Center Lot. By almost all measures, the program has been a great success. This council has three times voted to support the program and the only difference today is cost, which has been pointed out by some of the speakers. Over the past five years, JFS management has been supported by their own funds and generous grants from the Regional Task Force on Homelessness. But those grants may not be available this year. We just found out apparently that it is possible that some grant money may be available. But right now, we don't have any source of funding other than the city of Encinitas. The cost is a cost which is also being bored by other cities across San Diego County and is commensurate with the cost being paid by those cities for management of similar Safe Parking Programs. And because this program, as has been indicated, spans over 12 months, the cost is split over two budget years, 305 from the current budget and 305,000 in the 26, 27 budget. Given other commitments that this council has authorized, 305,000 is a reasonable budget ask for this budget period in order to preserve the Safe Parking Program at the community center. I will remind Council, as indicated by Ms. Landers, that the council's strategic plan for 25, 26 includes a goal of reducing homelessness.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Same rule.
Okay, Council, my name is Scott Campbell, Encinitas District One. This is COVID crisis carryover. First off, I have to ask, is the homeless emergency, are we still under that? And if we are, how come all of our neighboring cities are not? Why are we so uniquely special that we, only we have this homeless crisis? This is Safe Parking Lot. Are, is our city so exclusive that we have such high-end homeless that only people with cars are accepted? That seems kind of interesting to me that we're not accepting people that don't have cars. Now there's some history, we heard some history earlier. In 2019, JFS approached the city and said they wanted to do a parking lot and 2021, the council said yes. This is a three-month deal. It was for only three months. In April of 2020, the council met again and decided to extend it for an extra year, which is part of the original deal of total of 16 months. In 2021, JFS begged them to push it to the end of the year. Sounds kind of familiar, doesn't it? And then in 2022, it was extended for three more years. It was all under the same contract agreement. And if you read the terms of the agreement, it says pretty explicitly that JFS would pay all the money. It's in the contract. So basically what we're talking about is a breach of contract or changing the contract. So talk about that. Also in that contract is requirements for monthly data and I asked the council to find out from staff if we have received 60 reports, because this has been for five years, that's, we should have 60 monthly reports. I think we've only gotten like three or four of them. This is, once again, this is a breach of contract and they're not doing their part of the job. It's not asking much. So I asked the council to not spend the money on this. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dennis Caden, followed by Nicola Ranson and then Ron Medek.
Good evening, Council. Dennis Caden, I want to read option two from the agenda and says, elect not to extend the contract or provide the requested annual funding for the continuation of the SPP. JFC staff has indicated, since they are no longer accepting new clients, they have directed clients to their other existing SPPs which have, which has capacity for new clients. Yay. JFC also informed staff they are opening a new SPP in San Diego, which will provide additional capacity for program participants. Yay. The new proposed JFC SPP in City Heights was approved by San Diego Housing Commission on November 7th and contains 40 spaces with an operating budget of 593. Well, at 593,000 for 40 spaces, that's 14,000 plus per space, we're paying $24,000 per space under this. Doesn't sound like a value. By the way, I believe the more. By the way, I believe the more compassionate is to explore, and this is the rest of the agenda, explore our options with the San Diego Rescue Mission. If the city council chooses not to fund and continue the program, housing assistance could be provided by the San Diego Rescue Mission's contract, if approved, which includes a full-time housing navigator. Yay. The housing navigator program includes rapid rehousing funding, which is a rental agreement or rental assistance program that pays application fees, move-in costs, moving expenses, housing setup costs, et cetera. Yay. And staff is continuing to research other potential operators for Safe Parking.
Thank you.
Yay.
I'm Nicola Ranson. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. And once upon a time, I worked as the homeless outreach team for county mental health, East County. It was a very small team. It was just me. But it was a huge territory, and I met a great many homeless people. It's a diverse community, people are homeless for a number of reasons. But what would make my day was when I met a homeless person with a car who was living in their vehicle, because I knew that person had a high percentage of making it, of standing on their own two feet. Because if you've got a car, you've got some of your old life, you've got some of your dignity, you've got some of your personal space, and you feel safe. And I can tell you, a lot of people do not get those things at the public shelters or shelters downtown. People have a belonging to North County, a belonging to home. And I think the very least we can do to help our unhoused people is to be able to park safely. And having a car really enables people to get jobs much more easily. Have you ever tried getting a job in San Diego on public transit? It's almost impossible. And if I were partnering with an organization to help the homeless, I would choose Jewish Family Services, because they are a fantastic organization with a lot of integrity. And in many of my jobs, I've really relied on them. So I'm sure they will help you to partner. And if they can figure out some arrangement with them, I expect they will be great partners. But please do what you can to help keep parking available for homeless. It's the very least we can do as a community, and I want my tax dollars to go to that.
Ron Medek, leaving high. I just want to make a couple of points. Just a brief recap, as I remember, we had an initial point-in-time count back in 2019 or 2020. And about that, and when that count took place, there were a lot of questions brought up about how Encinitas got a relatively high number. It appeared that it came from a number of people from Solana Beach and Del Mar were included. So there was some question about if there was a beefed-up number of homeless. And at that point, it was still about 75, I think, or maybe less, including those numbers. So then along came the proposal for the SPL. And there was a lot of controversy. There was the concern about crime coming in neighborhoods and so on. Also, the concern about bringing additional homeless into this area that didn't live here. And the results were there, we didn't have a problem with crime, which was great. But when I look at these data that we're seeing from the Jewish Family Services, three-quarters of the guests at the SPL are not from Encinitas. And then I want to do the math, which is very simple. You take a look at $610,000 going forward, if you multiply that times five and a half years, you take the 78 Encinitans that have gotten help, let's just assume they were there for 45 days. I can't verify that because the data wasn't there. We come out to $956 for each night in a car. I don't think that's a great way to spend our money.
Next three speakers are Bob Kent with a time donation from Kim Piker, who is president, then Teresa Bocham, and Evan Bricker.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, city council members. My name is Bob Kent, Encinitas resident. I respectfully request that you vote to extend and fully fund the Safe Parking Program through the end of next year, 2026, at the community center, which is an ideal location for this vital program. With housing costs so high and without a strong financial footing, many people are living one paycheck, one car repair, or medical emergency away from not being able to pay their rent. So now, more than ever, having a safe, reliable, and dignified place to sleep at night is critically important for those individuals who unfortunately are living in their vehicles, many who are only recently experiencing homelessness, and I think about a half have been seniors. The Safe Parking Program is truly the last rung of homelessness prevention. The program has demonstrated successful outcomes without any incidents by providing participants case management services and a bridge to safe and stable housing. Encinitas, like most cities, spend general fund money on homelessness solutions, and I thank you for that. And our city has the capacity to invest $610,000 to fund this program while also applying for that grant that was just mentioned earlier tonight. Thank you for your decision last week to engage the Rescue Mission to provide homeless outreach and housing navigation services. Their work is important, and I'm 100% supportive of this effort. At last count, there were approximately 91 unsheltered individuals in our area, which includes Del Mar, Solana Beach, and an area east of our community. And there are 12 beds set aside at the Buena Creek Navigation Center in Vista. The Buena Creek Navigation Center in Vista serves a completely different population than the Safe Parking Program. The Buena Creek Navigation Center, which I 100% approve, support, thank staff for, serves the chronically homeless. The Safe Parking Program serves people who have been homeless less than a year, many who are actually working. So when we decide to try and solve this, we have to look at the whole picture. And that's all the more reason to continue this Safe Parking Program, which is our only year-round safe sleeping option that serves our general population here in Encinitas. Also, since it looks like we're going to step up enforcement of people sleeping in their vehicles, they should be given the opportunity to stay at the safe parking lot that is local. Please vote to extend this program so that we can continue to help our neighbors in need. Thank you for your commitment to ensure humane and effective solutions for people experiencing homelessness.
Mayor Ayers, Deputy Mayor Lyons, council members, I urge you to vote Option 1 to extend funding for the JFS SPP through December 2026. This program is a proven compassionate and necessary solution that has successfully provided shelter for years without a single incident. The JFS SPP is currently the only overnight emergency shelter resource in Encinitas. It provides a valuable, reliable resource for our stellar, community-oriented policing and problem-solving cops officers. When our newly homeless neighbors, who may be displaced residents, members of our city's workforce, or students, need a safe place to go outside of regular business hours or on weekends, JFS SPP is the only viable safe option our officers can offer. I want to commend our cops officers. Despite facing months of city staff vacancies and homeless services, they have consistently provided compassionate care, working tirelessly to connect people with limited resources. The requested cost of 610K across two years is affordable and fiscally sound. With new cannabis and increased property tax revenues as possibilities, we have the capacity. Additionally, we may explore using salary surpluses from recent city staff vacancies and homeless services to support this fundamental program. It would be disingenuous to claim a commitment to solving homelessness while simultaneously rejecting the only emergent safe place for thoroughly-vetted individuals and families to rest in our city. Please vote Option 1. It is a vital factor in the formula to reach functional zero status.
Hello. As a resident of Encinitas, I came here tonight to show my support for the Safe Parking Program and urge you to support funding for this program for another year. We should be doing our part to support and protect the most vulnerable in our communities. And losing this lot would leave people whose only shelter is their car a safe place to sleep at night. Please vote to extend the funding and continue to provide support to those in need when they need it most. Thank you for your time.
There's four more speakers. Did you guys want to have a motion to extend first?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yes, I'll entertain a motion to extend past 10 o'clock.
Do we have a time certain? 10:45?
Yeah, 10:45 should be enough, I would think. We're getting pretty close. We're at 19 right now.
I see that, yeah. So 10:45.
So I have a motion. Can I have a second to extend to 10:45? Okay. I got a motion and a second on the table. Call a question.
That motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we can continue.
Final four speakers, Brad Lefkowitz, followed by Shira Jacobs, Steve Lappin, and Rachel
Hello, mayor, council. As was stated in the staff report, people living in their cars are likely to be women and children. As has been said here in chambers before, I think it was said earlier tonight, the rates of assault for people living on the street is dramatically higher, particularly for those, for women. So with your vote tonight, you're able to provide a safe place for women, for children, and for people who need it. I hope you do so, and I hope you choose to seek the grant that was just potentially became available as well.
Hi, mayor, council members. I'm Shira. And in respect to your time and trusting in your sound judgment, I'm just here to request that you support the Safe Parking Lot. It makes a really big difference in people's lives in terms of just dignity and respect and chances. No one actually chooses to live in a safe parking lot, but it really gives a chance towards hope and change. So please continue to support it. Having had a safe parking lot literally in my backyard, I can tell you that there was no issues or concerns, or actually, quite the contrary, it was safer for our residents as well. So please support it.
Gonna hustle up here to save some time. Counsel, thank you. My name is Steve Lappin. I am a resident of Cardiff. I'm here today to support the Safe Parking Program. I want to thank you for putting some effort here. You know, I think Jim gave some numbers earlier, and I'll just give one more, which is, you know, more than 60% of Americans live paycheck to paycheck. It's a staggering number. And if we look around this room of 30 of us, that means half of us here, more than 15 of us, could be on the street at any point in time. And, you know, it's easy to forget this when we look at Cardiff and Encinitas and Lucadia and just the amount of wealth that we see everywhere. And I just want you to please, you know, think empathetically towards the people whose plight is less fortunate than ours. So thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor, council members. First, I want to give you all kudos, and I want to recognize the major steps this council has taken in establishing a long-term structured approach to homelessness. For the first time in my life, and the first time of the history of the city, Encinitas is committed to a comprehensive service partnership with San Diego Rescue Mission and has put more money than any council in the past has ever done to our unhoused neighbors. That agreement is a $350,000 investment, 120 or so over your original budget. So I'm really proud of that. The Safe Parking Program at 610 serves a population which is only about 25% of Encinitans. And I think that as Captain Watts told us last week, the San Diego Rescue Mission can fill in the gaps of all the missing pieces that we've had in the city over many decades. I want to reiterate to people that the success rate of this JFS lot straddles around 50%. Bob Kent said 45. I'm not impressed by that. The success rate of the San Diego Rescue Mission graduates is more like 95. When this parking lot was first approved, it was $1. Now there's 10 parking lots in the county, and now they want $610,000 from us. About $1 million we'd be investing in our unhoused neighbors. I want to look at the reality. In October, the lot served three people. Only one was from Encinitas. If we multiply three people times 12, we're 36. You take that one person, you take that one person a month, 610, I don't know what it is. You could buy them a house, honestly. Rent them a condo the whole time. It's a ripoff. They're ripping us off. Don't do it.
That concludes speakers on this item.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we will move to council deliberation. Councilmember O'Hara, you have the floor.
Okay, I'm not going to dive in too much. I just have a couple of questions before we get started here. I thought I saw it in here, but I can't find it in the packet. What was the cost for the lot in 2025?
2024, you mean?
Previous year, yeah.
Okay, yeah. 24.
The 2024 was 540.
How many spaces are filled on average in the lot on any given night?
We have monthly data. We don't have the daily data, but that, as I mentioned.
Could JFS answer that question?
Sure.
A representative from JFS answer that question.
Yeah, if you can come.
I just want to get all the information, so we're all.
Absolutely. So right now, we don't have a platform to provide you the daily data if you requested it.
Yes.
However, just due to the fact that the funding for this program has been uncertain, we've had to ram down on bringing in individuals. So I would say on a nightly basis, as recent, is about 15 to 18 spaces filled.
Okay, thank you. What is the average length of stay? I mean, you just stay up there, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I just want to get all this information, things that people mention in their comments. I wrote down those questions. Average length of stay?
Okay, I don't, I don't have that with me.
Okay.
To be honest with you, I'd just like to reiterate something as far as like.
I just need an answer to my question.
An average, an average length of stay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have that number with me, sir.
Okay, do you think it's a week?
Absolutely not, yeah. Absolutely not. We have a goal of 60 days.
Okay.
But yeah, it's definitely not a week.
Okay.
Any other questions for him?
Let me go through. I think the rest will be able to go to staff.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I see Vista had a similar cost. Does Vista use grants to pay for the JFS parking lot?
Yes, they utilize their ERF grant, and then Vista paid $20,000 out of general fund. The remainder was grant.
Okay. Yeah, we applied for the ERF grant, but it was pulled. Okay, so does Solana Beach or Carlsbad, either of our neighbors have a safe parking lot?
No.
Maybe, I don't know if this is a question for you or a question for the city manager. What resources are we dedicating in 2025, and what is the timeline in the past six months of things that we've dedicated to the unhoused here in Encinitas?
Thank you, I can take that. Just to be clear, we have not added any headcount as far as staff goes. So what we did is, we did have at one point two homeless solutions coordinators. They both left. We turned one of those positions into the homeless program coordinator. We turned one of those positions into the homeless program coordinator, which is Dr. Crystal Pugh, who's with us and joined us in September. The housing services manager was already a housing services manager. We took a planning position, and that happened a couple of years ago, so we've had that as well. We took the other homeless solutions coordinator and turned that into a deputy fire marshal. So again, Crystal joined us in September. We're currently recruiting for our housing services manager. And last week, of course, council went ahead and approved the San Diego Rescue Mission contract to let you know that was signed today by all parties, including myself, as directed by council. So they've already got a housing navigator ready to go, so they can start as early as Monday to start the housing navigation. They're also looking to do their two staff. One again does outreach, the other does case management. They should be on board within mid-December and up and running fully by the beginning of January, but the housing navigator will be ready to go.
Okay, and that's an increase in staffing from previous years?
It's an increase in resources, because all we had was two homeless solutions coordinator. We did not have a housing navigator. So through the contract with the San Diego Rescue Mission, we have one full-time case manager, one full-time outreach, and then we have a housing navigator, as well as we have our homeless program coordinator, who is coordinating all of that. And we did have one HOPE team that was started a couple of years ago, then we added another HOPE team, so we have the two HOPE teams as well. So that was another resource.
Okay. And these resources were put together also go to the food pantry, Meals on Wheels, and some of the other services.
That's different. That is, that's some HUD funding and CDBG, and those are grants, but they were awarded to Meals on Wheels, they were awarded to CRC, as well as Legal Aid.
Okay. Appreciate the update on all of the items we're doing currently. I just needed to get those questions answered before we go. I'm going to yield the floor for the moment.
Okay. And I think, I'm going to try and clarify even better, just so we make sure we're all on the same page. Was it a year and a half ago we added the two deputies for the HOPE team?
Yeah, I want to say that was fiscal year 2425.
2425. And so that was actual headcount definitively for HOPE outreach. We had the two caseworkers, and although the, those positions got reclassified, that expense that we were spending on homeless, although they were vacant for almost a year, but prior to that, while they were here, we were spending on a homeless, that's now replaced by the contract with... So we've been spending, I think your point was, how much money have we been spending on homeless per year? And we do have quite a few positions that were and are now being replaced by the contract with the San Diego Rescue Mission. The deputies are on board, they're there. So I'm just trying to clarify.
No, it's great, I appreciate the clarification. I'm just wanting to get it all, so...
Yeah, yeah. But I think, if you don't follow this every day, sometimes the explanation of the headcount moving around loses it. But on the big picture, we have about three people plus two deputies at a minimum.
Yes, and if I could ask Planning Manager Patty Anders, and then how much do we spend? Don't we spend, it's like 543,000 a year for the BCNC, how much is that a year?
There's that, too.
Yeah, about that. Okay, thank you.
I think that was your point, right?
Yeah, I just want to get an inventory of all the services that we are, we're looking at and we're comparing against and leaning and considering in this discussion. I appreciate the clarification from the mayor, staff, and the city manager. Thank you.
And I will continue to frame this, just so we understand what we're talking about here. When it was originally approved, and all the time it's been reapproved, this is a North County Safe Parking Lot. It is not an Encinitas parking lot. It is, we, sure, we contribute to it, and as you hear by the numbers, a quarter of the clientele are our clientele. And we've been paying, well, we haven't had to pay anything, and I pulled the 2021 staff report from September 29th, and literally in the questions and answers in the staff report, it said, "No cost to the City of Encinitas, the Encinitas Community Center residents or the program participants, that it would be funded through the state funding and additional private philanthropy. JFS will cover all expenses to operate the program." That was in the readoption extension in 2021. And, you know, that's where I'm coming from. This is a bit of a shock to me, that all of a sudden, we're at the end of the year, and by the way, this happened six months ago, right? All of a sudden, we got to the end and said, "Hey, we need an extension." So we extended it six months. And when you looked at the numbers, I think I have slightly different numbers, but I'm going to round them to what you, you said 540,000 was the total cost of what was expended last year.
Let me clarify. Thank you, Mayor. The total budget was 540, but the actuals provided were 518, because they were, didn't spend as much with anticipation of the program.
Okay, so the budget authorization was higher, but the actual spend was only 518 total for the parking lot. And that 518 came funded 223 from a grant from a regional, the Regional Task Force on the Homeless Grant?
223 was from JFS operating budget, and the remainder, 317, was from our TPH grant.
317 is not, was not spent, though. So which one do I reduce? Do I reduce the grant side or the JFS side? You're saying we actually spent 518, so it may have been even less. So round numbers, 200 and change from JFS, 300 roughly from the grant.
Typically, the grant would be expended first and then operating budget.
Exactly, exactly. So, and that's been kind of the condition all along. JFS has been contributing. So I'm a little surprised that we're basically said, "Here, you take it all," because this was agreed to, that this would be a North County resource. And we've got a quarter. I'm okay with us potentially paying half. That's more than our share, but I'm looking for JFS to partner up. It's interesting, we have option one and option two. I'm going to propose but not make a motion yet. I'm just going to throw out an idea. I'm for option 1.5, and that's a six-month extension with shared cost. And then that'll give us time to look at submitting for this brand-new notice of funding availability. It'll let us look at other operations. It'll, more importantly, it'll let us look at and work with San Diego Rescue Mission and determine, can they offload some of the services and therefore some of the costs since we're already hiring them to do that? And I think, Jim, that's where you were going, trying to say, "Hey, we're already spending. Let's just not throw money at the thing, let's use it judiciously." So something to consider here is something in between, that the other thing I like about going till June 30th is that's the end of our fiscal year. And we'll be going through budget discussions, starting with goal-setting in February, going into April and May, setting the budget and adopting it in June. And that would let us decide how much money we want to spend on the entire package, the entire homeless option, because we're already spending a lot, and it puts the request on equal footing with all the other requests. So I won't make a motion yet, but I'm running, well, I can make a motion for discussion, which is, we do option 1.5. Oh, what's been offered as a motion?
Not as a motion. Staff has already offered that, but I would agree, but we'll leave it there. Staff offered a half a year and asked them to come back, and they said they wouldn't do it because it wouldn't support the operation of a full year of what they really need. So that was offered up, and they went for it, but we'll...
And I appreciate you playing the devil's advocate here, because just in June, they took a six-month option, so isn't that odd?
That's what I was surprised by when I read the staff report.
Well, let's just discuss it, we'll keep going, and then I won't make a motion now, and I will yield the floor to Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Well, thank you for your thoughts, Mayor. I think there's some merit there, but let me just start by saying, Miracosta College is in my district, in District 3, and I know from talking to leadership that some of their students do sleep in their cars. And it's kind of the hidden truth in our community. And these are, we talked a lot about seniors in the Safe Parking Program, but the students, for example, are our future, and we want to catch them before they go into homelessness. They've got the wherewithal to be in community college, and we don't want them to drop into homelessness and then become a lot more of a concern for us as neighbors and potentially a lot more of a burden financially on the society. And so I want to make a few comments. I really want to honor that it's true that JFS has been an important part of our homeless solution, solutions, plural, since 2019, and I'm glad for that partnership. It's true that we also continue to have homeless housing issues in our community. I feel like, though, we've made some really good choices to address the, our homeless situation, better than many other cities. I think we have some challenges that have to do with the funding, and it's true that the funding has been a challenge for us, and I think we need to look at it a little bit differently from the perspective of us as a city pursuing the grants. And what I want to characterize here is that, that if we look at what's, our prior agreement was a use agreement for JFS. Now, this option one proposes a professional services agreement, which is a very different entity than a use agreement. It really puts us in the driver's seat more, and I like that. I think that's an evolution of how our relationship should be with JFS on the Safe Parking Program. What that does, then, is give us more, more strength in going after grants. Now, sometimes you might think, "Well, Vista got half of its funding through grants, why couldn't we do that?" And I think we can, and I think we should pursue it. And I've talked with staff about this. What's interesting is that right up front, they look at criteria like, "Well, do you have any shelters in your community?" And we have to say, "Well, we don't." But, and if we did, that would notch us up as far as being eligible for these grants. But the reality is, we're a coastal city with high property values. We've figured this out a different way. We're partnering with the City of Vista for the Buena Creek Navigation Center on that housing solution, on that temporary shelter. So we've actually established a model of how you can solve the problem and contribute to the solution when you have some limitations within your own jurisdiction. Now, I think that's really powerful. That's how we're unique. That's how we can look at solving the problem of positioning ourselves to be more competitive for grants, and I'd like to challenge us to do that. And that's just one example, I think, of how we could look at the criteria differently. So we do have the 305 in our unrestricted funds, and I'm support, other communities have added money to their Safe Parking Programs from their general funds. So I am in support of helping this program continue to move forward and be the valuable asset to us as one of the components of helping us address the homelessness and the housing issue in our community. And I would like to see us help to fund, and I see it as a bridging, help to bridge this Safe Parking Program to its next evolution. And if that means partial funding, I will, I will accept that. I think the full funding would guarantee that we would have confidence and we would have a strong, the strongest program moving forward. And I would prefer that solution, but I would also consider another level of funding as long as we can characterize something that doesn't threaten the program itself. And let me see, I think I'll stand down now.
Okay, Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. I would go back to, we did have a grant, actually, a year from tomorrow. The grant was pulled by the former city manager, so...
Yeah, I know that. We can do better.
That was 2.4 million that went bye-bye, and every other city got it, by the way. So that was, that's upsetting. I think this is actually extremely sad scenario, that we come in here in June, and we do extend this program, and at that time, I'm assuming JFS knew this was happening, and they knew the direction, and then our staff has to reach out to you as you're dwindling down your program and offer a three, a half a year, and you guys just got the half-year extension, and then we get a kickback saying, "Only a whole year at $610,000." It's kind of highway robbery. We were expected to pay zero of the dollars, and now you're expecting, when we say we're going to offer half, you say, "Ah, it doesn't go well for us." I think it's sad that you're putting it on us, that it was something that you committed to and have not upheld your end of the deal. And now it's expected for us, and at this point, at $610,000, at $200 a night hotel room, that's 3,050 stays. It would be more beneficial for us to get a deal with the Days Inn down here and actually have rooms open and not have to sleep in your car, and actually give them the dignity of a shower and a bed and some time there. And then we could have our San Diego Rescue Mission come through and have services right there and be able to help them through a permanent housing solution, whatever that is. But to sit here and say that we're not compassionate, trying to think that $610,000 that we've got to pull from a budget next year on an already dwindling budget and other things that have to get taken care of for a group that doesn't pay taxes here, and I'm not saying that we need them to pay taxes, but the fact of the matter is, there are a lot of people that do, and they expect our, their money to be used judiciously. And so to sit here and ask for that, I'm pretty upset to have that ask. And so the mayor said, "Option 1.5," that's already been offered. Patty and Dr. Pugh offered this, and it didn't, you knocked it back and said, "Only a full year will do." And so now we're stuck here, you know, with that option. If we want to do the half-year, I would be into it, but I'd almost be rather that we run it, or somehow we figure out that we don't want this group to be the one running it, because they failed us and they've negotiated themselves out of the deal by basically pinning it on us. It's pretty sad that that's how, that we're trying to use the heartstrings on us and put it on us when in fact, you're the one that failed the citizens that need this service. It wasn't us. I just wanted, I just want to know that for a fact, and I'm saying it loud and clear right here, right now, that you are the ones that failed them, not us. And so we, I would be willing to go to 1.5, and I would be willing to offer the half a year, just like we did in June, because we are compassionate, but not again. And you are not the group that deserves if this is how you're going to treat what you think is your profession, right? This is what you do for a, like, for a living. And it's bolstered up from 510, 18 from last year to 610. What's the extra, what's the extra amount? Are we expecting an explosion of new onset? Where's the explanation? Where's the line item list, like a normal business runs or a nonprofit? Where is that itemized list?
Is there a motion in there?
I don't think there's a motion, but I do think that there's, I could support 1.5, but I don't know if I want to support the Jewish Family Center Services being the operator of it. So I'm struggling with that right now.
You yield?
Yield.
Okay. Councilmember San Antonio. I'm just trying to be conscious of the 10:45.
I'll be fast. I, I'm a little underwhelmed. I really thought when the, this, just following along, just follow along. It's a, for San Diego Rescue Mission to come in last week, was it last week? And he was, his love language was numbers, metrics. I felt like he was excited about what he was going to do, what was possible with what he was doing, and what was about to happen with the implementation of his team. I think I'm underwhelmed because I, Councilmember O'Hara asked just a couple of questions, and the answers were, weren't great. I think if we asked San Diego Rescue Mission, they'd be on it. He would be, he would have a number, just because, and like I said, I don't know, we haven't used him yet, but he was excited about the numbers. He was excited to provide the data, which I think residents want. They want to know what, where this money is going, how it's being used, where it's gone, and what, what is the outcome of this, of the money we're spending. I believe the City of Encinitas is doing a lot for the city, as for the unhoused here in our town, and in surrounding. City of Solana Beach and City of Del Mar, they don't provide anything. No services, no parking lot, but we do. I'm just a little underwhelmed with what was, what was presented. I really wanted more, and I think what Councilmember Schaefer said, it's right. We offered the... We, we offered the, the extension for six months, and he didn't want it, and I, here we are. You're asking us for a lot of money, and to me, that just doesn't, it's not fiscally responsible. And I, I hate counting people as numbers or as money, because I don't care if there were 78 resident, or 78 people helped out of that 308, and there were 78 people from Encinitas. To me, if somebody needs help, you help them. But, man, it's, I'm, here we are, we're saddled with this, and, I don't know, I'm just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not having a good feeling. I'll yield.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion, what, basically to have staff work with JFS on a six-month extension where we split costs evenly, and then using essentially the same contract. And so we would have roughly 150,000 in there. What, oh, were you there?
I was.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Do I, I don't, why, oh, you're on the other, other screen, that's why. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
I'll let you go. Then I'll come back.
Yeah, I mean, last time, I just wanted to get the information, and, you know, I've heard from all of my fellow council members. I think we're all here because we see a gap that we don't want people to fall into. I think we, we all believe in helping these people, and these are the people we can help. And I've, I've supported this, this, this lot, or supported people in helping them go through this lot in this program. So I know the Jewish Family Services cares too. Could you do a better job of your data? Probably. Is that why we're here? What I hear is, and you're welcome to answer this, we care about our unhoused. You also care about your, about the unhoused in North County, right? I think that's fair to say. And we have an impasse where there's a number on the table that is not going to work. Doesn't go up in accordance to what Councilmember Schaefer said. For what it should be, if it were like anything else, it'd be about $535,000 ask, why it goes up to 610, I don't know. And it's not clear in here that, that, that need has changed. That said, we care about people. You care about them, we care about them. I think because we all care about people, what I'm going to ask is a motion to do just what the mayor said, come to terms on a six-month lease, where you can help people, we can help them at the same time, we can sort through the dollars. And it's a transition. It's a transition for your services, which seem to be focusing really on your City Heights facility, and your Vista facility, which is great, you're doing amazing things. Within that time, our sheriffs still have the ability to, should our lot not be operating, not be available, to, to put them into those, to, to help them get to those services as well at City Heights or Vista. But I think the question is, and I'm asking one of you to stand up and answer this, are you even interested in having a discussion about six months?
So Will, come on up and please testify.
Thank you. Kaylee Lovett, and I just want to say thank you very much, all the supporters that came out today.
If you could pull the microphone close to you.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
Yes. So, thank you so much for this opportunity. It's very grateful to be here, standing here today, and so much gratitude that this is an issue that you guys are considering, and, you know, that you are putting more services out there for the community. We had to come to terms and look at what are we doing in the community, what can we do best for the clients that we serve and our employees? And unfortunately, at this time, we cannot run a program with integrity and the compassion and care and the services that we want to do with the standard of care for six months.
So, so how is that different from the past six months?
We had funding through December.
So funding were available for the next six months, how would that change?
We need funding, we, 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 we knew, we had planned for a whole entire year and within our budget, and the minute we knew that there was no longer be funding available here, we started working out to city staff and others to see what else were the opportunities. And so we cannot run a program with only six months in our horizon going forward.
So, so we're saying we don't have $610,000. We care about the unhoused. You care about the unhoused. We need a transition so that we can figure out an alternative solution to Councilmember Schaefer's point. Can you work with us on a six-month solution or not?
Unfortunately.
A yes or no question.
At this time, we cannot. We've been working for a while to come up with it, and we can't. We only have, we need to have a year in order to continue.
Okay. We don't have $610,000, and that's going to be the challenge. I wish we all had the same dedication to this, these residents, or North County residents, that we could work this out. So I guess I don't have a motion to present, then. I'm going to, I'm going to yield the floor. Thank you. Appreciate you answering the questions.
So, so it sounds like where I was going to go is let staff negotiate. Let me change the motion and say, reach out to other providers and see if we could do anything for a six-month. But I think right now, we're, we're hearing that whether it is JFS, if they have a change of heart, or whether it is beds for, what's the other one? I, you know, I don't know. It sounds like it, it's a fait accompli, so it may not even be worth it. But at this point, I'm, I'm, I would have made a motion to let staff go and negotiate this with JFS and see where, where we could go.
They already have.
Yeah. So, but I think that's important. So.
Sure. Please.
Yeah. Jim, if you'll let me manage the public.
I'm sorry. I'm still talking.
One important thing is that maintaining staff. Already, staff knew that this deadline was approaching, where there was no guarantee of a, you know, of a job continuing, and to maintain the quality of staff that we require in this program, to make sure that we get the success and outcomes we need, we need to make sure that we can hire the right staff, and we can't hire staff on for just a short time period. We've got to make sure to give them the opportunity that this is a sustainable program, and we are willing to be a partner with the city. I always say, safe parking is one of the prime examples of public-private partnerships. Once the cities and the, you know, community members and stakeholders, private philanthropy get together, it creates a very strong, successful program that's very impactful. And so that's what we've done in other communities as well, is that there's been a program to come together. And so it was amazing that we've actually, at this point, with the City of Encinitas, that we're going to be looking, that the city is looking at joining together, whether it be with us or whoever it is, to create that model of a public-part partnership, to bring the community together, to create more of this impactful program. And so I'm grateful that you guys are going to have this conversation to get to that point, even to have, you know, to put in half the funds towards it is amazing and a great step. It's just unfortunately, the timing does not work out in order for us to maintain the quality of the program with the staffing.
Well, and I'm, I'm a little alarmed that you've already been turning clientele away. That, 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 that is completely contrary to what the agreement was, and the fact that you stated here, I'm assuming from attrition on your current staff, that you haven't been replacing or hiring people because you couldn't, you couldn't commit to them long-term. So we've been on this path for a while, apparently, unminounced to at least the council, and it's a bit alarming to me right now, and I think this is part of your alarm concern too. So, you know, we're, we're, we're in a, between a rock and a hard place. I certainly would like to continue this. I would like JFS to reconsider. I, I don't think tonight at 10:35 is the time to do this negotiation. I still have the floor. So I'm going to, I'm going to go forward with the motion, and, and 1.5, basically empowering staff to reach out formally to JFS. You can formally decline, that's fine, but my offer that I would make in this motion is that we would fund half of the six months, and JFS, like they've been doing, is funding roughly half, a little under half. We're talking the 150,000 range for each of us. For the next six months, you could plan it to wind down the program. We could, we could use that time to hopefully come up with an alternate approach that integrated with, with San Diego Rescue Mission. But ultimately, I'll look for your decision. Let staff take that negotiation. So it's, it's, it's a potential path out of here. I, I hear the indication tonight is no, but, but I think it's, it's a rational one. So that's my motion. And with that, I'll yield to Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Okay. Thank you for that motion. I could support that if we consider a little bit of a bigger picture, which I think is important for us to consider at this point. We have shown a lot of support for the safe parking program. There, it's across the community, and we've, we've been successful at it for so many years. If we put aside the uncertainties that we've had to go through in this last six months, and the nuances of funding right now, which are unfortunate for everyone, just, just honestly, it's just unfortunate for everyone, if we put that aside and we think, what do we want to do in the future? Then I would say that we direct staff to consider others, other than JFS, and consider longer, a longer, more sustainable approach to a solution that would continue safe parking in our community. And I would like, and, and I think what that does is broaden it to other kind of outside-of-the-box providers. It also broadens it to see how we can use San Diego Rescue Mission, if we can. But I think I'd like to leave here with a feeling that we are committed to solving this question we have right now about what is our future solution for a safe parking program in our city. And, and Mayor, if you're, if you're comfortable with just saying a commitment for six months financially, well, maybe that's a start, but I would like to see what is the long-term solution, because I wouldn't want just another bridge at this point. I would like to form a longer-term solution.
So, so if that's a friendly amendment, and hopefully a second, to also have, as a second part of the motion, have staff return with longer-term options to be considered for safe parking lots and funding mechanisms, be it grant and/or general fund. I will agree with that.
I think we have opportunities with grants that we haven't had the ability or, or the direction we needed to pursue, and, and so let's, let's look at that, and let's look at other options. I think we've got the right staff in place now to help us with that.
And, and again, I'm trying to get by that time, just like you said, for San Diego Rescue Mission to come on board with us. It also brings us into our budgeting cycle, so we can actually have a comparative study about how much money are we spending on homeless? Are we allocating it to the right sources? And that would occur in the next six months during this, this changeover, wind down, could be a continuation, where that option still exists. So as a friendly amendment, to have staff also return with a longer-term safe parking lot proposal or options, options, I think is what you're saying? Options?
Options. Thank you.
I accept that. Do you second it?
I will second it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I think it's more than safe parking, and I think that we haven't asked Crystal what your opinions are. Do you have any opinions on what we just kind of set up here about getting the six months, giving, giving her some runway? She's only been here since September, but, you know, kind of giving her some runway to, because you explained to me during our staff briefing that bridging this gap even for a year, it kind of, it's, it's bifurcating our, our direction. So if you wouldn't mind explaining that, please.
Sure. Yeah. So with a program like this, it's, the integrity of the program long-term is really where you find this long-term success. You know, so really supporting the city in reaching functional zero. So, you know, what are the goals of the city? Where do we want to go? And so having the long-term plan in place to try to address these different gaps is really where we should be looking to develop these programs.
Got it. And that's, and that's kind of, and we just made a commitment to the San Diego Rescue Mission last week, and that's kind of one of our big deals, is helping long-term. I get that it's not ideal, and I appreciate Jesse pointing that out, that you don't know who you're bunking with, if you've got kids. Kind of goes to my point with, you know, hotels days or something of that nature. If we could put some level of thought into, and I guess this is directed really to you and to staff, as far as getting to the place where we have that plan, and I'm not sure what the financial requirement or the benefit right now are of giving some more resources, like a, like 400,000 to, to the, the project with half, you know, about 300 of that being two, or I guess 150 over to the Jewish Family Center Services. Meaning, we're going to get, we're going to fund the parking lot with them if they, if they so accept. If they don't, well, then we have some money in there, in there to play with for that six months to get to that, whatever that next grant is, the ERF grant that gets us to the place.
And that grant doesn't come available even until May, so it's way out there.
Correct.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-six this year, yeah.
No, no, next year, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's coming up.
Yeah, so it's, it's outside of this fiscal year. And so what I'm trying to get to is the end of our fiscal year with 150,000 roughly, not to exceed 150,000, let's say, and get through this year with this motion. And then in the meantime, as, as Deputy Mayor Lyons added, we'll, we'll do the planning, and I know we're doing our budget planning, and this topic will be front and center during the budget planning, but the entire budget for homeless services.
Correct.
Will be included in there.
And like I said.
We can, we can do a much deeper dive as to how much exactly we spent in the, the current fiscal year, and how much we're proposing going into the next.
And even something along the lines, like I said, if there's hotel down here, I know that it's not at full capacity on a regular basis, would it not be something of the nature where we actually are helping bridge the gap towards the getting housing? That's the, really, the solution, especially for those mothers with kids.
Yeah.
A parking lot's still kind of a, it's still low. It's a low bar to set, like, oh, we're just happy with them sleeping in a car for five, you know, 60 days. That's, that's really not hitting the mark at all. So if there's even a better way to go, and finding a way for us to bridge the gap before San Diego Rescue Mission's able to pick them up and find a permanent solution, why not find a hotel that's right here that maybe we partner with? There's usually vacancies at least at the time of year.
And I think you're talking July 1st and after.
Yeah, sure. Exactly. But giving Crystal some time to get herself running here and give us some, some ideas of how we can actually bridge that gap.
I think that, that becomes turning whatever happens into an opportunity, to evolve this into whatever it needs to be, whether it's thanking Jewish, Jewish Family Services for an amazing job the past few years, imparting, or in coming, or continuing on, or whether it's, hey, maybe a lot isn't the best way, but maybe there's another way to do it. This, in that way, can turn and become an opportunity to be the next step in this, serve our unhoused even better in this gap. So it may be just as much an opportunity as it is.
It is 10:44. And I'll either, we have a motion on the table, which we can vote on, and if that's it, then we're done, or close to done. Okay. So I'll call a question?
And just really quick, also, all of this will be in the HAP update. We will be bringing the HAP update this spring, so that is your comprehensive homeless action plan. So please understand the, the information that Deputy Mayor Lyons is asking for. We will include that in the HAP.
And I would ask that we get the HAP update on or around February when we're having our goal-setting session?
Yeah, we will do that. We can look at that, and then we start budget workshops in March.
Yep. Okay. So with that, I have a motion and a second.
Do you want me to read back what I have?
Quickly?
Yeah. So it's to direct staff to engage with JFS on a six-month shared cost extension, not to exceed 150,000, and then also staff to return to council with longer-term options for consideration.
Yep. Sounds good. Call a question?
Motion carries unanimously.
There we go. Okay. With that, we are on to item 11, which is informational items. We have none. We have no council-initiated items. Number 12. 13 would be city council member reports pursuant to AB 1234.
Nothing to report.
I already reported that we were at the San Llo JPA. They were talking about infrastructure enhancements throughout, and making sure that any safe, any emergency, major emergency requirements, like a catastrophic, you know, earthquake, fire, or whatever, that systems are in place. So that's all I have.
I think I forgot to mention, I was at the North County Transit District meeting. We voted on approving the 2025-26 bylaws. Other than that, things are moving along there. Yeah, there it is.
I will report that I attended the Encina Wastewater Authority meeting, this board meeting this morning, and last week, the Los Sand Sandag MetroLink meeting, board meeting.
And then I attended the same Encina Wastewater meeting this morning, and I've attended, I have not reported on, and attended three Sandag Board of Directors meetings on the 11th of November, on the 31st of October, and the 30th of October. And we had a permit parking. parking subcommittee meeting that Councilmember Schaefer and I attended. And I don't know that this is necessarily AB 1234, but we will bring a redlined document back to an additional subcommittee meeting to be scheduled. These are publicly noticed meetings, like the previous meeting. And that's it. City manager report.
Thank you. Just be on the lookout the next coming weeks, as we're heading into holiday season. Our communications manager will be working with our sheriff's captain, and our fire chief will be having some great safety tips each week for people to stay safe during the holiday season. And I just want to say, since Thanksgiving is next week, thank you very much for our wonderful council, and all the direction and policy that you give us. Thank you for our residents who are engaged and want our community to be better. And again, thank you to our wonderful staff for all the work they do. So thank you.
City manager, do we have a meeting between now and the holiday parade?
I was just going to say that. We do what?
We do not. So, yes, okay. Sorry. Thank you very much. All right, that's right. I think, I want to say, I think it's December 6th, as I'm looking. It should be December. Hold on, I got this. December 6th. Okay. Thank you very much.
And the night before is?
Yeah, this is, the tree lighting, the Heritage Tree Lighting is the night before. I'm sorry, we, I'm trying to be rushed. But yes, please do not forget, tree lighting on the Friday, the 5th, with the Historical Society, we're partners. And then, yes, the amazing holiday parade, December 6th, starting at like 5:30. Council will be there, all of our residents. It'll be awesome. So thank you.
And city attorney report?
No report this evening.
No report, okay. City clerk?
Nothing to report.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.